We're good? Everybody's good?
Yep.
Good evening. This is the caucus and council meetings for February twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five. Presiding Officer of the Council, Milady Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted posted on the bulletin board in the city clerk's office and on the city's website indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chamber, City Hall, two sixty High Street at five thirty P. M. I'm sorry for the delay, but it's five forty right now. The council meeting will follow the caucus and close session. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you should you need to make a phone call, please go out in the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
Council President Tejeda.
Present. Okay, topics, council interview of candidates of board positions. Citizens Public Safety Advisory Board, Arnulfo Lopez is here. Come to the mic, please. Okay.
Hello.
Hello. We just want a little background of talk a little bit about yourself, your background, and why you are interested on to be part of this board.
Okay. My name is Arnulfo Lopez, but you call me Arnold.
Mm-hmm.
A little intimidating, wasn't aware it was gonna be like this.
Ah, it's okay.
But it's cool being one of the main topics, I guess. A little bit about me, well, I'm in the food service industry for a number of years now. We have our own safety committees at work. We talk about safety every day, from food safety to physical safety to, I mean, you name it. The moment you walk in the door to you leave, we're supposed to look out for each other. So ideally, you know, I signed up for the newsletter for Danboy and started getting these communications. And safety really comes as like a lifestyle or a mindset, and this topic came up and it said, hey, you're interested, why don't you come check it out? So that's why I'm here.
Okay. I'm not sure if anybody will have a question, especially Councilman Puccio, because he knows a little bit more about that board. Maybe, I don't know if you have any question about it for him.
I probably have a couple. Are you done?
I think so.
Okay. Well, just just so you know, I'm one of the original members of the of the Public Safety Committee. But I'm now the council liaison to the committee. Do you know, has anybody told you exactly what the Public Safety Committee does?
I read a little bit about it, but I felt this was the session gonna be for that, a little bit to talk about a little more what it entails, what it involves. So I would love to hear a little more about it.
Well, it has to do with law enforcement, law enforcement in the city of Perth Amboy. And, you know, actually, you know, it was the brainchild of this administration. You know, the mayor, I believe it was how many years ago, three, four? Four years ago, came up with, you know, putting this committee together. So we're not overseers. We can make suggestions on how how did for the police to get along better with the citizens that they serve. So that's basically the whole idea behind it. You know, but people can come to our meetings, which are supposed to be quarterly, right? And they may have a topic like they may have had a problem with with the police, and we're there to listen to what they have to say. Do you have any questions for us?
No, I mean, safety, like I said, it's all around us, right? You know, you wanna walk safely, right? Anywhere you are, wherever you see you see something. I think everybody who connects is just family, right? So I just had a baby girl. So surprisingly, she's already one year old, and she's teething, so I'm already getting the texts like, are you almost home yet? But, you know, it's that's really just got it to my attention. So I was hoping just to get some more feedback and see if I could have any input, you know, anybody else who really, like I said, I think we all value safety, right? And just that's really my thinking.
Okay.
Okay. I'm good. I do have a question.
Okay.
What made you interested in, you know, because there's several boards open, what made you interested in doing the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Work as opposed to other boards?
Like everything else, I think just personal experiences. I guess in my neighborhood or block, you know, you see cars speeding and up and down the road and, you know, how could I support in, hey, maybe if I speak up or maybe this is not just happening here, maybe somewhere else, maybe we could do something, right? So I think that's really what sparked it more than anything.
Okay, good.
No, go ahead.
Okay. And I have another question. You know, being that you heard what the Public Safety Board is about, trying to get a connection between the law enforcement officers and the public, you know, the citizens and the residents for them to actually get along. We are hearing nowadays, you know, how people are not too happy with law enforcement or, you know, and and you're hearing people bad mouthing or or vice versa or whatever. How do you think you can help to bring up ideas to, you know, to overcome that, that problem that we have we're having in general as a society? Do you have any ideas or you can, you know, think of?
I mean, I haven't really thought about that. I mean, I respect everybody, especially those who do that for a living, right? Like we always say, we only reach out when we need them. It's, you know, it's, yeah, I mean, we see what's going on, right, as far as the news and everything else. But I I feel here, from what I'm reading, we're really take that top of mind and making Perth Amboy look totally different. I've been here crazy enough, almost twenty years. I was born in Houston, Texas. How I ended up in Perth Amboy, I don't know. But I'm here and I've been here for twenty years. So, you know, you do see changes, you do see things, how they've improved, especially from twenty years ago. So it's all about being on the right track and just pushing forward and, you know, everybody working together.
Thank you for that insight about noticing things are moving forward here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Of course.
I think that's it for me.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Did you have another question?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll wait for him.
I mean, you've been here for twenty years, and in your opinion, how do you feel about public safety here in law enforcement, here in Perth Amboy?
Um, well, luckily enough, I haven't had any situations. But I feel good as far as what I've seen. You know, I do see them around, I see them more visible, right? You know, there's, other than the speeding that I'm experiencing a lot, I wish they were much closer when I need would need them. But, yeah, I mean, like I said, it's, like I said, I've definitely seen a change, a change, right? It's just in everything, but, you know.
Very good, very good.
You're good?
I'm good.
Haley?
Thank you, Puccio, for sharing that background knowledge. I didn't know that, so I just learned something new today. And thank you for sharing that you do see a change. I know, working within the city and working within the schools, the PAL does absolutely amazing, and they're also bringing in tutoring. The DARE program, I know that the, since I was in school, of course, the police officers work great with the middle school students in bridging that gap, especially starting with the youth. Read Across America, Career Day, of course, as Councilwoman Morales did mention, though, we want to continue bridging and merging a positive relationship and rapport and giving feedback. My last question is just which skills you have that are an asset and transferable to the role now that you hear a little bit more about it? So which skills do you think are crucial for this specific role as a board member?
Again, just having that mindset that I already have, which is safety, right, is the main topic. And it is a lifestyle change, especially at work. And like I said, you apply that even in your personal life, right? So just having that already and everything that we do and not just thinking of it as an individual, but around you, is really what makes it work, right? And just having people with the same mindset, you know, that's how you take it. And I feel with me committed to that, I could, you know, contribute.
Thank you.
Of course.
Mine was very similar to Councilwoman Cruz, so we're good.
I just want to thank you for coming in tonight and to be interviewed and to be have the desire to be part of some of the boards that we have. It is, we need people to get involved, and that is a nice gesture. Thank you.
It's always nice to see new, you know, new faces, new ideas.
Again, wasn't expecting this, but you're welcome. Thank you.
And especially the aspect of a parent perspective, so thank you. And sorry if it was intimidating.
It's all right.
You did great.
Thank you.
All right, take care.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we move to the ordinance, ordinance, public hearing, five minutes. I'm sorry?
Sorry, council, are there any other interviews or anybody?
Well, as per the clerk, the people that were called in would never responded to the, I mean, I don't know if there is. Okay. Oh, okay. Which one is which board?
The same board.
Oh, the same board? Okay, come on up.
Good evening, council members. I do have a resume. I didn't print enough for all of you, but.
The council received the one.
We received it, yeah.
Thank you so much.
I don't seem to have it.
Not, well.
I want to see it.
Twice you got it.
I know, but I can't find it. I'm gonna give it back to you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello. Good evening, council members. I'll start off by.
Introducing yourself.
So my name is Daniel. I'm a lifelong resident of Perth Amboy. I grew up in Perth Amboy. I went to elementary school here, I went to middle school, high school, and now I'm a graduate student. I still live in Perth Amboy. So I went to Rutgers for undergrad. I studied English and political science, and then I'm studying public policy. So I thought I would be perfect for this role as I have been learning a lot of policy plans, and I could really implement a lot of new ideas for the board. I'm currently taking a criminal justice policy course, so I do have connections with my professor and a lot of different speakers that we have been speaking in class that have been incarcerated and have been are now trying to improve the prisons and the jails in New Jersey, so I thought I would apply to the role.
Okay, all right. Is that all?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? I mean, anybody wants to, I mean, you can ask the same.
Yeah, I'll ask the same question as the other gentleman, being that, you know, with the the heat with the between law enforcement and, you know, the public citizens, how do you think you could be able to contribute to try and, you know, get a better, what's the word I'm looking for, collaboration between the two, and if you have any?
So at least my understanding of the board is just to some accountability for the police department. So I think the public does feel a lot better when there is accountability and when there is communication about what the police procedures are and ensuring that they are, they have healthy policies in place to ensure that no one is getting harmed. So I think that's really important. In a lot of city, different cities across the country, they don't necessarily have like standard policies when it comes to arresting people that might lead to unwanted deaths. And I know our city doesn't want like a major lawsuit or anything like that, and I know residents don't want anything like that. So just just talking about that, having those conversations and making sure that everything is fully transparent with the residents.
And the other question I did ask the other gentleman was what made you choose public safety over the other boards that are here? What made you have your interest towards this?
I do believe, well, there is facts that the carceral system does proportion disproportionately impacts Latino and black New Jersey residents. Although New Jersey doesn't necessarily have the largest prison population compared to other states, we do have a large disparity when it comes to arresting white people compared to Latinos and black residents. So that's something that I wanted to, a reason why I wanted to get on the board, to ensure that we have, we don't have racial bias in the police department and ensuring that they're there to protect all residents.
Okay, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So I see that you've had multiple internships, and I'm sure that you've gained a lot of knowledge and experience from that. How would you take those experiences and implement them once or if you were to be a part of the advisory board?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. So I have dealt with a lot of elected officials, so working with the legislator and previously in the Senate as in with my internships. So I do feel comfortable speaking with elected officials if that is needed and maybe being the liaison to. and maybe being the liaison to residents in Perth Amboy and ensuring that we're able to effectively communicate with one another.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead then.
Mr. Rosario, you've lived here a long time, your whole life.
Yes.
Do you have an opinion of the Perth Amboy Police Department?
Personally, I don't have an opinion since I haven't interacted like the other gentleman did say. But I just know that there is a long history when it comes to police in general, so not even in the city, when it comes to disproportionately impacting people of color. And when you think about the origins of policing, the American policing came from slave patrol and then also just the working class movements and just putting out working class movements. So, and those are just some of the background that I come in with because I have a strong understanding of the police. But that's not necessarily to say that makes me have a negative idea of this specific police department. And I'm just looking to improve and just come up with good ideas so that it's transparent for everybody.
You realize during the last seven years, the governor through the Attorney General's office had put into play a lot of different programs for police officers to interact in the community. They created a database for police officers that have infractions. So, you know, the stuff is there. Now, I understand, you know, and I don't know if you're aware of this, how long I was a police officer. But altogether, I was a police officer for 40 years here in this city. So, and I always felt that we always had a good relationship with the citizens here. With that said, Perth Amboy is a community of color. So how do we balance that all out? Well, one of the things that they've done here, especially over the last 18 years, is the makeup of the police department reflects the community now. So when I became a police officer in 83, it was different. Back then, the majority of the police officers were white males. Today, not only are we, do we have a large, more than probably, and the chief of police is here, I'd say 95% of the police department is Latino, Hispanic.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. So that reflects the community. And, you know, as far as female officers, we, I think we went from having one to, how many do we have today?
We're excessive, 20. We lead the county in female police officers.
Yeah. I mean, your resume is pretty, pretty impressive. And you're, you're a very smart young man. And very articulate, so, no, I just, you know, I just want you to let you know that when we sit up here, you know, as the committee, not the council, when you, on the committee, we broach a lot of different subjects, so, but no.
I appreciate you showing the strides that the police department has made. Definitely makes me proud to be from Perth Amboy.
No, I'm good, I'm good. You have any questions for us, though?
Yeah, I was wondering how often does the board meet or is that up to the board itself?
Quarterly.
Quarterly?
And you, well, you know Samantha, she's the chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to ask a question. So, understanding systematic barriers is of course key and crucial. But we do want to merge at bridging the gap, as you mentioned, of course transparency, but also being a liaison and trying to balance both sides. How would you use your skills to be a liaison to understand concerns pressing specifically for Perth Amboy? I know a lot has, might have happened then, unfortunately, in other towns in terms of different experiences of that nature. However, how would you use your skills to bridge that, that gap in?
Yeah, so in one of my classes, the criminal justice class that I talked about, we had an unbiased, I think it's called an unbiased, something where they visit the prisons and then they basically make reports about it. And then they speak to the police department about like changing those things. So something that worked for them was just making sure that the police union, and I'm sure there's a police union for Perth Amboy or group, just ensuring their rights as police officers. Just making sure that we're communicating with them if there's anything that comes out of like misuse or misconduct and just making sure that we are keeping them in the loop and we're on the same page. I hope that answered the question.
Thank you.
Everybody's good? I want to thank you for coming out today and being interested and being part of boards. That's what we need, fresh mindset, fresh opinions. And thank you for sharing your life.
Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, ordinance, public hearing, five minutes maximum per speaker, per ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled and an ordinance designated restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons. Ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2nd, 1985, also known as Chapter 255C of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. This is about deletion. Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons. Ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2nd, 1985, also known as Chapter 255A, C of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is about amendment. Number three, the ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled Vehicles and Traffic, ordinance number 194-78, as amended, adopted September 19, 1978, also known as Chapter 414C of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is about parking near driveways.
I just have a question for the chief about this ordinance.
Chief.
So what would, it was like 16 from the ordinance, they're gonna add like 16 inches?
Yes.
For both sides, for commercial? How is this gonna be enforced? Like, is it when somebody complains about it? Or is it somebody who's gonna be just constantly driving around and seeing if somebody, if somebody, if a police officer just happens to be driving and they see somebody parked right by the, you know, edge of the thing? Are they gonna give them a ticket or are they just gonna drive by? You know, because enforcement seems to be a little bit, I don't, lack of a better word, lacking. Because I see it sometimes with double parking, people parked in yellow spaces and they're just passing by it. So I just want to know how is this gonna be enforced?
Generally gonna be complaint based. Because if you're not using your driveway, you don't have an issue with the driveway, it's not something the officer's gonna be able to know or tell or that type of thing. So it's generally gonna be complaint based. When somebody calls and says, my driveway's blocked, I can't get out of my driveway, that type of thing is when it will be addressed.
And then they would be issued a warning or summons or?
As I mentioned at the last meeting, it would be initially warnings because it is new ordinance. We need to get that out there and so forth. Then there would be, you know, enforcement or if it was multiple times. Could be the first week, but if we went to the same vehicle twice and warned them, they got the, they got the hint.
Okay.
And how will this be, how will everyone be informed of this new ordinance?
We work at the mayor's office, we always get that out on, on information campaigns, on social media, those type of things, on our website, on our social media, we'll get that out there too as any of that.
Emails as well? I think a lot of people have emails.
Yes, I know the city maintains, the mayor's office has an email address and everything else from there. Plus, we have an email address for all of our people that are registered for parking and so forth. We can blast out to those individuals, so we'll get a good percentage of the population.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda, public comments. Citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizens shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. Bits, bits were received on January 29th, 2025 for the following. City Hall Interior Renovation Phase Three. J&amp;M Quality Construction, $769,400. Macaulay Construction Company, Inc., $893,000. S. Horan USA Contractors, $999,500. Ticon Construction, $1,329,853. Epic Management, $1,44,425. Farrell's, $1,235,000. Huska Painting and Construction, $1,105,000. Nella Carpentry, $745,000. All Face Consulting, $1,329,853. The awarded bid was for J&amp;M Quality Construction. Yeah, go ahead.
Just my question was, what was the difference between J&amp;M and Nella? Why?
Yes, and that's a saying concern. And so what we did was we have the architect who here can give us a little background of what the bid entails and why this company was selected. We also have the manager of public buildings here as well for any questions, but you can address.
Good evening.
You can introduce your company.
Oh, I'm sorry, Andy, Andrew Trochia, I'm the city architect. Our firm handled the phase one improvements and as well as the phase two improvements of City Hall. We've done a few other projects for the city, but for the last several years, we've been focusing really on the improvements to the City Hall.
And one quick thing, when you say phase one and phase two, for those that don't know, it's downstairs, a tax collector and tax assessor's office. Those renovations he was instrumental with, and I can go into the project and why with the bids too. Thank you.
The only area that hasn't been really touched on the ground floor is the annex area. So that's the work that we focused on in this final phase, so to speak, of the, of the ground floor. If you'd like me to address that first question. Yes. We reviewed, what we typically do is we review the bids from the lowest bidder until we get to a point where everything's in order, okay? And with this particular bid, not only does it include the base bid work of the annex, but it also had alternates, including work up here in the council chambers and some subalternates that were involved with the work up in here, like doing the flooring in here, the entire floor and the painting. I was quite surprised, quite honestly, based on the, what's going on out there in the construction industry, basing my numbers on phase one and phase two, I anticipated this work to be above a million dollars. Probably somewhere in the 1.1, 1.1 and a half million dollar range. So I was quite surprised when the numbers came in like they did. And whenever they come in lower than you anticipate, I hate to say it, but you get a little nervous as to the quality of the bidder. I did contact J&amp;M's references and got good reports back on them. The, if you looked at all the alternates, there was another low bidder. However, and I guess that was, I guess that was Nella?
Nella Carpentry.
Nella, yeah. Unfortunately, they were missing many, many documents, critical documents. So we had to reject that one. So J&amp;M Quality with the alternates was a low bidder. And again, coming in much lower than we ever anticipated this project coming to allow us to not only do the base bid work in the annex, but improvements up here in the council chambers. The, the work down in the annex area is gonna be, because we don't see as much public back there, the finance department, really just staff, Office of Economic Development will see residents. But it's more of a, it's more of a pretty basic office area.
You have the schematic? You have the schematic that he can demonstrate after we?
Sure, if you want to bring that up, please, it's, um, annex. I have nothing to look at.
While that comes up, I just want to ask you, J&amp;M Quality Construction, has they ever made, done any work here?
None.
None, okay.
No, they have not. So I think what you're seeing right now, right, is a plan for the annex area. Like I mentioned, it's a, it's a basic improvement to an office area. We're not going to have all the millwork that we have in the water department and in the clerks area. That, that won't be part of this. We do have new case work, we will, it'll be a completely new office space with new finishes and new arrangement of spaces. What we do and what we've done with the city going back some time, we met with, we meet with the staff and talk about their needs for their departments. And from that, we develop a program, a written program, make sure everyone's on the same page, and then we develop the layout. So the layout you're looking up, looking at up on the screen is based on that communication with the staff members. The, any questions on the annex area?
No.
Okay. We do, quite frankly, like I said, I did not expect alternate one, which is the council chambers, to be selected because I did not expect the numbers to come in like they did. You know, good for us, they came in low, so we're able to do this. What's proposed up in the council chambers right now is this dais wall will be removed and replaced with a more, like a more modern, I'm gonna say, solid wall, wood, wood paneling. Everything from here forward will be renovated. A dais that'll bring you up six inches, it's a little more visibility for you and the, and the residents. And a fixed dais counter, so you're not sitting at these tables. You'll have an actual counter with a wall in front, a privacy wall in front. It'll be a little bigger than the area you have here now. Like I say, it's raised six inches, there'll be a ramp on this side, provide accessibility and a step over on that side. Again, numbers coming in as good as they did, we had an alternate to not only do the floor on this side of the dais wall, but the remainder of the space. Those numbers came in below budget, so we're able to redo the floor in here as well as paint the entire room. We also have an allowance, whether some of you know this or not, you have a structural issue above your head, sir. And so we did remove, or the city removed some of the boxes from that space. But what's included in this also is once we remove the ceiling in here to do what we need to do with lowering the ceiling, making a nice stop it in there, we're going to have them remove the ceiling in that area to see what the issue is with that structure. I don't know without demolishing what's up there, what's going on. But we have an allowance in the job to let them go up there, remove that ceiling, see what's happening and stabilize the floor. So I think that's the extent of the work.
Thank you. Anybody?
I got a question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
What about the honor roll?
Right now, we're, we would be painting around them.
So there's no plans to move this honor roll, is there? Mr. Green?
Not yet.
No, no, right now, we're just, we're just painting around. I mean, the framed photos obviously will take down, paint all that. But right now, we would paint around the frames unless we're given other direction by government body.
No, I'm just curious about whether, what would happen to the honor roll of all those men and women whose names are on those plaques?
Nothing as it stands now.
That's why I just want to know, they're untouchable.
Yeah, I don't think they're untouchable.
That's a good word.
That's it.
They shouldn't be touched.
That's all I wanted to know.
Okay.
It, does that, like, so everything historical in here, does that include that being untouched as well? Like, would the paint be around it?
Well, historical is a term, and what you qualify as historical, this would definitely not be touched, like you said, the names would not be touched.
But this will, back here?
This, is it possible, yes, that, I don't know if this is historical, would anybody characterize this as historical? Because I don't know if it's like Thomas Mundy Peterson.
It's only been around since 2009.
Right.
So, no, Thomas Mundy Peterson and everything else.
The plan for the back wall is to have a wood paneling system.
Yeah, I think we're, we're just going over. So then, my main question was, so that seven, that this bid is including the renovation, I mean, the downstairs of the annex and it would include up here for that price?
Yes, yes.
So, let me get this right, so this is gonna be gone?
Oh, yes.
I don't have a problem with that. Because I, I think it, I think it looks like, some of them looks like cartoon characters. So something more, you know, entuned to, that, that looks like, and some of it is not historically correct anyway.
It'll be, it'll be more appealing to a, a public council chambers. It'll, it's going to be a wood paneling system, okay? From the frame of that window that way, and from that door that way. That'll all be a wood finish. There'll be some fabric panels for sound purposes. And the wood will all match what we're doing here with the dais and this wall.
Okay.
I'm good, I'm good.
I'm good, thank you.
Town steel above.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Reports. Fallon Barczewski, tax collector, submitted the monthly report of collections for the month of January 2025. Number two, Jill A. Goldie, CFO Controller, submitted the check report for the month of January 2025 in the amount of ten million two hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars with sixty-six cents. Ordinance, first reading, not public discussion. Number one, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, amending and supplementing Chapter Four, Administration of Government, Article 12, Department of Human Services, Ordinance Number 1522-2010, as amended August 11, 2010, of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy to update fees and provide additional regulation related to criminal history background checks.
But, Madam President?
Yes.
Can I ask Mr. Green a question? I guess it'll be Mr. Opel. What are the additional regulations?
Okay, I think.
We have the Director of Recreation here, but I'll just start initially to say what this allows is for an appeal of criminal background checks. So if I'm getting ready to start in recreation, I'm a volunteer for a program. To, of course, absolve the city of responsibility, any liability, we do a criminal background check. And let's say mine's coming back, hey, Michael Green has something that's negative in my background check in the past. And I thank you for being astute with this and following up for this, Kenny, thank you. To make sure, if I have a background check that comes back negative, I now have a way to appeal that and say, hey, no, that wasn't me, or whatever I want to do. Now there's a process, and that's what this incorporates. And, you know, I can let the director speak directly to it, Recreation, or manage Recreation. But that's what it does, that's what it allows for.
So there are criminal background checks now?
Yes.
Right?
But there was no way to appeal it.
So, for instance, somebody applies to be a coach.
Yes.
A coach, right? And let's see, criminal history comes back, and it's gotta be in their CCH, that it get fingerprinted. They got a theft on there. They want to appeal that.
Okay.
It has a process.
Who is the person that decides the appeal?
Well, it's gonna be three people, one from Recreation, one from Administration, one from Police. And that will be your, lack of a better term, tribunal to decide whether it should be appeal, appealable or not, whether we can say yes or no.
Because I don't have a problem with it, because I believe everybody could have a second chance, but you, you need to check people out that are gonna work with kids.
For the liabilities.
Because you never know.
Yes, sir.
And he?
Was that good?
He's good, he did a good job.
It's referred to as the appeal panel in the ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm good with that, I just wanted to know what the deal was.
Well, first of all, good evening.
Yes. And I think you gave us a very good explanation when we were in agenda prep, and I would like you to bring it up.
Sure, so basically, when I came on in 2009 as the superintendent of Recreation, there was no established policy for background checks for volunteers at that point. And just to give you some, some insight from that time, we did have an individual who was coaching females that did have a record, which he should have not been at that time. And it became very apparent that there was individuals who should have been disqualified that weren't. So in 2010, we enacted this ordinance. And basically, what happens is, if somebody wants to coach, they come in, they fill out a form, they must have their fingerprints done, and they're checked by the state police. So state police will send us a letter saying that the person's disqualified. They won't give us any details as to why they're disqualified. They'll send the same letter to the individual who applied. And then at that point, the individual can ask for transcripts from the state police, so they can review their record, but there's no appeal process. So basically, what we're trying to do now, if somebody had a theft charge, a minor theft charge, 20 years ago, when they were 18, and they want to come back and help the community, well, they provide us the transcripts from the state police. It'll actually be a designee from the Department of Human Services. I will remove myself, so that way there is no conflict. Because initially, I'll get the letter, so I'll be the person to notify them to disqualify. So our director would, either herself or a designee, along with somebody from the police department and Administration, would oversee their appeal, and they can make a determination. If it was something 20 years ago, something small, then yes. If it was something that was grave, like a sexual assault, or distributing drugs, you know, a certain, you know, felony, no, then, that's gonna be disqualified. So, but the state police say that we may disqualify people. They give us, they tell them they're disqualified, but they give us the ability to kind of like, take care of it locally. So if there are individuals that we feel that are good, you know, residents of the city citizens, and they're willing to contribute at no harm to our kids, that they should be able to.
It's tricky.
It is tricky. But the thing is, and I'm gonna tell you, so, I'll just, recently, I've become a very popular person on social media, because I've been turning away a number of individuals, and they feel like it's my decision. The decision's not coming from me, it's coming from the state police. So I want to give people the opportunity to at least appeal and plead their case, so then someone outside of myself can also chime in on that, you know? We want people to, we need the help, you know? And people do want to help, but it has to be within the guidelines and our policies.
I probably believe in giving people second chances. It's just that certain things can't be overlooked, like.
Of course.
You know, sexual assault, you can't overlook it. Especially if they're gonna be working with kids.
Yeah. We're good?
I'm good, I'm good.
I'll see you sometime next year again.
Thank you. Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Persons, Ordinance Number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2nd, 1985, also known as Chapter 255A of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. Number three, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled, Ordinance Fixing and Establishing a Schedule of Salaries and Salary Ranges and Increments for the Perth Amboy Fire Officers Association, FMBA Local 258, Ordinance Number 218-79, as amended, adopted July 3rd, 1979. Number four, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, authorizing the sale of the property located at the Block 93 Lot 1.03 and Block 95 Lots 1 through 16, commonly known as 599 Fayette Street, to Claremont Property Acquisitions LLC, for the purchase price of, I'm sorry, I'm reading my old one. I just want to make sure I have the right number, because I know the number was wrong there. The price of thirteen million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and additional action to effectuate same pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 48, Column 12A-1.
Can you elaborate, please, on?
Mr. Opel, yes.
So, the city owns the property where the current DPW site is located, and there's some significant issues with it as far as environmental contamination. There's a waste transfer station, a landfill. And city was approached by a redeveloper, and the proposal was to acquire this property from the city. Initially, the price was a little bit higher. We've since removed certain portions of the property out, that's why you see the price that's, that's there now. And basically, the plan is that the redeveloper will demolish and relocate the, the waste transfer station, the animal shelter, the gun range that are currently located on a portion of this property. They'll construct a replacement waste transfer station. They'll conduct all the remediation needed to close the landfill. They'll rehabilitate the existing salt dome and recycling center on the property. And the DPW operations on a portion of the property will all be retained by the city. And they'll construct a new animal shelter, a new traffic operations building for DPW, and a gun range on certain parcels on High Street for the city. On the site of the current DPW, the developer is going to construct a cold storage warehouse facility. As I mentioned, it's, there's significant contamination for the site, so there's not a lot of options as to what can be built there. So this, this was certainly, you know, based on the, the public benefits that were proposed, this was a good option for the city to consider. So, you know, this, this project has to be approved by both the city and the redevelopment agency. The redevelopment agency approved it already. So the city is required by ordinance to approve the purchase or sale of any property. In this case, it would be the sale to the redeveloper. The public benefits, one thing that's important to note, the pursuant to the city's project labor ordinance, all of the public improvements that I mentioned, the new animal shelter, the traffic operations building, the gun range, will all be constructed using union labor. Because the, based on the cost and the fact that the city has the project labor ordinance in place, it'll be required to.
For all, they can hear you in the back. Thank you.
So those are, those are certainly, not only the, the construction benefits to the city, but also an opportunity to, for the city to undertake a project that, that provides work to, to union households throughout the city and the county. So it's a, there's a number of positives here for the city.
I was gonna ask that question, Mr. Ballot.
The projected time.
On High Street.
The city owns some parcels by the Prologis Warehouse. So it's, give me two seconds, I'll pull up the exact addresses.
I saw the address, and I forgot.
Does the director of?
So, yeah, it's 1015 High Street. So 599 Fayette is the site of the DPW property now. The relocated facilities we built at, at or around 1015 High Street. So the city owns 1003 and 1015 on High Street. City, part of the, one of the contingencies of this agreement is for the city to acquire a portion of the property owned by Prologis that's down there. We've, we've had conversations with Prologis. We have another call with them next week, it's a contingency to this agreement. We're working on that. They are open to transferring a parcel that they don't need for their operations to the city as part of this project. They, they were encouraged that it was, it was for a public benefit. They like, they mentioned that they, you know, want to be good neighbors in the city. So we have to have some follow-up conversations, certainly, but that's one open item that is, that needs to come into place for this project to go forward. But certainly, this council's approval is probably the most important, so.
So, Public Works and the Pistol Range.
And the Animal Shelter.
And the Animal Shelter will be located down by the water, on the river. I would assume the range has to be closer down to the water. I, I got a visual on where I think it is, but does it achieve for, can, Ms. Vasquez? I mean, I got what you said, Mr. Opel, I just need a more visual spot.
Yeah.
Good evening. So the animal shelter, the traffic maintenance building, and the gun range will be built on the self-storage side of High Street.
Right, the Target Warehouse, the Target Warehouse is here.
That's on the, that's on your, so if you're driving towards Quaterette or leaving Perth Amboy, the target is on your right?
Yes.
The property that we currently own is on your left, closer to the railroad, so.
Oh, all right, all right.
Yes, so after the 440 connector.
Okay. That's what I really wanted to know.
Yep.
Anything else? Anyone?
Nope.
Okay. Keep picking up everyone.
Here's, just where?
I can't bring it up there.
Number five, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the contract for sale of surplus real property located at 400 Laurie Street, Perth Amboy, New Jersey, to Perth Amboy Redevelopment Team for Neighborhood Enterprise and Revitalization Partner for forty thousand dollars. Number six, an ordinance of the city of the, of the council of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, authorizing, and. Authorizing an ordinance entitled Mercantile Establishment and Business Registration.
Can you elaborate, please?
It's a business registration. It's gonna be, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, fifty dollars annually for businesses to register. It'll be, not with the clerk's office, it would be with code, where they would be registering their business. And it's, it's good to at least start doing this, so we know what businesses are here within the city. And they would register annually. They'll also display this permit within the premises, within each premises of each location. But if you want to go.
So if you want a quick summary, there's no, currently no centralized inventory of businesses in our city. The benefits of having this registration include, it allows for the collection of owner contact information, demographic, track business trends, business gaps, and overall number of businesses in our city. It allows us to tailor development programs, support local entrepreneurs, and support local entrepreneurship. It also provides business owners and investors with the confidence that the municipality is well organized, stable, and supportive of businesses. In addition, municipalities can better track local employment trends and job creation, helping with workforce development. Information about industries and their size can guide local job training programs, improving employment outcomes. Municipalities can offer targeted support, such as business grants, mentorship programs, or networking opportunities to registered businesses. Having a list of registered businesses enables municipalities to easily share updates, new policies, initiatives that might affect our business owners. We developed this ordinance around other municipalities that have mercantile ordinances, including Sarawak, Matouch, and New Brunswick, Long Branch. The fees in all those other municipalities typically range from a hundred to a hundred fifty dollars, where our initial fee will only be fifty dollars, I'm, I'm sorry, a hundred dollars, and the renewal will be fifty annually. We're looking to roll this out with an education phase first, with no fee until January of 2026. So at this point, we would just use this time to edu, with the ordinance passes, we would use this time to educate the businesses of the change to the local ordinance, and, and then roll it out with the fee starting in 2026. We're currently developing the application, which will be available online and in person at the code office. So again, they would apply, and they would have an annual renewal for fifty dollars. Any questions?
Not yet, just for later on, for one of the further resolutions, so. No problem.
Resolutions, R91-225, rejecting bids for the lease of municipal land space for erection of a toll, commercial billboard, and advertising for requests for bids. R92-225, authorizing refund of an overpayment for a laundromat operation license in the amount of twenty dollars to Kwang Se Pak Amboy Laundry Matt, Laundromat in 150 New Brunswick Avenue, Perth Amboy. R93-225, authorizing refund of an overpayment for a laundromat operation license in the amount of twenty dollars to Curtis Burger, Early Bird Laundromat, 365 Convery Boulevard, Perth Amboy, New Jersey. R94-225, authorizing emergency temporary appropriations to extend the calendar year 2025 temporary budget in the amount of two million five hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. R95-225, accepting the bid and awarding a contract to J and M Quality Construction for the interior renovations to the Perth Amboy City Hall, Phase Three, in the amount not to exceed seven hundred and sixty-nine. in the amount not to exceed $769,400. R96-225 authorizing settlement of workers' compensation litigation entitled Jose Vega versus City of Perth Amboy CP number 2017-5956 in the amount of $5,541. R97-225 authorizing settlement of workers' compensation litigation entitled Anthony Garcia versus City of Perth Amboy CP number 2023-19229 in the amount of $12,569 with 70 cents. R98-225 authorizing settlement of workers' compensation litigation entitled Jose Vega versus City of Perth Amboy CP number 2022-10515 in the amount of $46,554. R99-225 accepting contribution of $117,198 with 30 cents from Perth Amboy Business Improvement Corporation, Inc. for the Rosen Garden Park improvements.
Are you able to quickly go over the improvements?
So as you all know, the Rosen Garden Park property was purchased by the city last year. The total cost of this project, including property acquisition and construction, is a little over $1.4 million. The acquisition was $425,000, and the construction is coming in at $1.03 million. And engineering fees are about $95,000. So the total project cost actually is $1.5 million, I'm sorry, $1.55, of which $688,000 came from NPP ARPA funding from the state. $700,000 came from UEZ state grant-funded money. You already initially approved $50,000 from a Business Improvement Corporation contribution. And on tonight's agenda, you have $117,198.30, which is the remainder of the contribution from the Business Improvement District. So this park was, this property was acquired and will be turned into a pocket park in the heart of our downtown district. All at the, most none of it coming from direct city operating budget. All of it came from grants, and now this contribution from the Business Improvement District. I'm sorry, the Business Improvement Corp., we have a new name. So again, we have a study. The recreation element and open space element says that the heart, or the downtown was lacking open space. So this was a priority to us, and we look forward to constructing. If all goes well, we just got our permit from the state, so we can go out to bid within the next week or two. And if all goes well, we will have a shovel and ground within the next two or three months.
Thank you. R102-25 authorizing a contract with FFI for the purchase of a firefighter equipment replacement under New Jersey State Contract 17-Fleet-00807 in the amount not to exceed $51,866 with 10 cents. R101-225 authorizing submission of a grant application and execution of a grant contract with the New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety for the 2025 Distracted Driving statewide crackdown grant in the amount of $12,250. R102-225 authorizing a 2025 service agreement within Motorola Solutions for the police radio system in the amount not to exceed $47,677. R103-225 authorizing execution of contracts for towing services for the retroactive period from January 1st, 2025, and terminating on December 31st, 2025.
Council President, I have a question regarding this, I mean, resolution. For Mr. Opal, is it too late to, like, to request a requirement for the tow companies for these contracts? Or do we have to wait till the next contract period?
Well, you're approving it, so, I mean, we can discuss in closed session, but this resolution approves a contract that pretty much reflects the ordinance that we have right now. So to the extent, and we can certainly discuss contract negotiations in closed session, so that's an option, to hear some more specifics. But I just wanted to be clear that the contract as drafted is in line with the ordinance. And to the extent we go beyond that, it may require an ordinance amendment prior to changing it. But I'll, you know, we can discuss that further in closed session.
In closed session, okay.
So you want to add it to the?
Yes, please.
Okay. R104-225 authorizing acceptance of a grant from the county of Middlesex in the amount of $23,404 for the Perth Amboy Municipal Alliance Grant Agreement for the fiscal grant cycle, October 2020 through June 2026, which will begin on July 1st, 2025, and end on June 30th, 2026, and authorizing a revised grant agreement with the county, with the city financial match of $5,851. R105-225 accepting the extension of in-kind training from positive coaching and a grant in the amount of $2,500 offered by the National Recreation and Park Association, Inc. R106-225 authorizing cancellation of unexpended water, wastewater utility capital fund improvement authorization in the amount of $8,949 with 1 cent. R107-225 extending the contract with BNW Construction Company of New Jersey, Inc. for the repairs of the City of Perth Amboy Collection System for the second year of the three-year contract based on the bid option to extend for two additional years for a total contract amount of $800,000 for the 2025 calendar year. R108-225 authorizing refund in the amount of $1,881 with 10 cents to Maria Cruz, 333 Neville Street, Block 209, Lot 33, due to overpayment of first quarter 2025. R109-225 authorizing refund of WS Subsequin first quarter in the amount of $565 with 82 cents to LNY New York, Inc. on Block 106 dot 02, Lot 5401.
Council President.
Yes. I'm sorry.
About the next.
The next one?
I have a clarification.
Okay, so R110?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Okay, you want me to read it, and then you?
No, 110 should be voided.
Should be taken out?
Yes, taken out. 111 is what the council's being requested to review tonight. 110 is actually an exhibit to 111, because it's just, they got switched up.
Okay, thank you. So 110 is removed. R111-225 authorizing and directing the city's planning consultant to determine whether all property identified on the city's tax map constitute an area in need of rehabilitation.
Can you, I know that one's a little more general, not as elaborate.
Yes, so not, there's a distinction between rehabilitation and redevelopment.
Yes.
So this is a study as to whether the property, all the properties in the city meet the criteria for in need of rehabilitation. Two things about rehabilitation designations. No long-term tax exemptions are permitted, and no powers of condemnation are afforded to the city. So those are two important distinctions for rehabilitation areas. Rehabilitation basically allows the city to otherwise come up with a redevelopment plan for the area, which can set zoning standards in a manner that the city thinks will allow for improvement of certain areas. It can tailor those plans and make them specific, not just to the entire city, but to any areas within the city. So it can, you can target some local improvements. There's also, there's a five-year exemption and abatement for, to promote construction and rehabilitation of existing structures in the area. And what that is, is basically, they would still pay the land taxes, they would still pay the improvements, they'd have an exemption from improvements constructed on the property. So it incentivizes improvements of existing properties for property owners within these areas. So, you know, it just, it allows more flexibility to, for certain uses, for certain design standards, and certainly for incentives for existing property owners to improve their existing structures.
Without allowing a pilot, as mentioned.
Right, I mean, yeah, the long-term pilot tax exemption wouldn't be applicable for these areas, but certainly the five-year abatement that I mentioned, you know, homeowners and property owners in the area could avail themselves of that if they choose to construct and rehabilitate existing structures and existing properties.
Thank you. Any, anything else? That's good. Okay, that was 111, right? R112-225 authorizing a refund of overpayment first quarter 2025 to John W. and Maria Tinder on Block 395 dot 02, Lot 15, in the amount of $2,197 with 23 cents. R113 authorizing the installation of the Black Heritage Trail marker at the Perth Amboy City Hall Circle. And I think our lovely Lisette has a presentation for us.
Good evening, Council. I'm Amy Lisette LeBron, on behalf of the City of Perth Amboy. I'm excited to share the Resolution 113, focused on the Thomas Mundy Peterson Marker Project, which aims to honor Peterson as the first African-American to vote following the adoption of the 15th Amendment. Part, this marker will be part of the New Jersey Black Heritage Trail. This historical marker, which will highlight, obviously, Perth Amboy's significance in American history. So this is the project overview. So the New Jersey Historical Commission is leading the project in collaboration with the city. And so about the marker. The dimensions are 30 inches by 42 inches, five feet tall. So if you're familiar with the Middle Passage Port marker looks like in the waterfront by the ferry slip, it's almost exactly the same design. Cast aluminum with a sturdy aluminum pole. Its design has a white background with black text, gold trim, and a QR code that will link to the Black Heritage Trail site, which will be maintained by the state. And it'll be double-sided with the same message for visibility. So the marker text, so the marker commemorates, obviously, the history of the historic vote of Thomas Mundy Peterson, acknowledges the decades of activism by African-Americans, and highlights the medal presented by Perth Amboy residents and the designation of March 31st as Thomas Mundy Peterson Day by the New Jersey State Legislature. So the proposed locations is in front of City Hall. There is a triangle area in front of the pavers. There's also another alternate location in City Hall Park. Currently, there is a kiosk, offering optimal view from walking paths, because they both join. And again, this is just in terms of visibility, accessibility, and historical significance. It takes about 12 weeks to fabricate. We will look to do the unveil in June of 2025. So that's what's being presented in the council. And the state will proceed with the fabrication order. So it's my honor to thank our city historian, John Dyke, for nominating the Thomas Mundy Peterson Marker to the state. Also, our New Jersey Historical Commission team, Noel Lorraine Williams, a director of African-American history program and Black Heritage Trail, Dr. Smith, project manager for the Heritage Trail, Gregory Oldley, the assistant project manager, and Saran Kuratin, the executive director of the commission. And also to thank our city staff as well, because we're being presented on behalf. So again, you know, this project not only honors Perth Amboy's rich history, but also strengthens our role in promoting black heritage and cultural education through this New Jersey Heritage Trail.
Thank you.
I hope I answered every question.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
R114-225 authorizing the person-to-person transfer of plenary retail consumption license number 1216-32-025-007, held in the name of Convery Associates, Inc., TA Garden State Discount Liquors at 895 Amboy Avenue to Perth Amboy Liquors LLC, TA Garden State Discount Liquors, effective February 27, 2025. R115-225 authorizing the person-to-person transfer of plenary retail consumption license number 1216-33-080-007, held in the name of Collado Enterprise LLC at 310-312 Elm Street to Pisco, the Chalan and Teal LLC, TA Piscos Restaurants and Lounge, effective February 27, 2025. R116-225. I'm sorry.
Madam President. Can you go back to 114 a minute?
114, yes.
Garden State Discount Liquors. Is that the one on Convery Boulevard?
Yes.
Then why is it saying Amboy Avenue?
It does?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, yeah, no, it's on Convery Boulevard, number 25, yeah.
Thank you.
Forty years of being a police officer.
And the name says Convery Associates. Sorry, that's, it took you a little while, but you got it.
I had to think about that one for a minute.
All right, thank you. 116-225 authorizing the person-to-person transfer of plenary retail consumption license number 1216-32-069-013, held in the name of Drinks To Go LLC, TA Drinks To Go at 890 Amboy Avenue to 890 Amboy Avenue? I'm a little confused here.
Yeah, their name is 8 Amboy Avenue. That's the name of the corporation that's gonna hold the license.
Okay, but it says 890 Amboy Avenue?
That's where they're located.
That's where they're located? Okay. 890 Amboy Avenue, effective February 27, 2025. R117-225 authorizing the person-to-person transfer of plenary retail consumption pocket license number 1216-32-081-006, held in the name of Suyanya Linga to Harita Ben Patel, effective February 27, 2025. R118-225 reappointing Edna Dorothy Cardy Daniel to the Housing Authority for a five-year term expiring December 31st, 2029. That's it, no adding for it. Okay, closed session resolution, R90-225. R. 90-225 authorizing a closed session at the February 26, 2025 council meeting to discuss the following: workers' compensation, Jose Vega versus City of Perth Amboy, Anthony Garcia versus City of Perth Amboy, and Jose Vega versus City of Perth Amboy. And the other one was?
The towing.
Oh, the towing. And the other one is towing negotiation. So I need a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes.
Public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public. All in favor? Oh, second. She said second. All in favor? Aye against? Okay, it's open to the public.
Tim Bowles, 359 Brook Avenue. What's the percentage of the taxes the people pay on a bid? Does anybody know what the percentage do they pay for the bid?
What percentage?
Which percentage? Put it out there, because I told the company for the bid, they don't even know how much they pay. All right. Is it a fact? It was mentioned here from somebody from the landings that there's no CO on one of those buildings yet, and those buildings have been up since 2010 or whatever, and there's still no CO. So is that factual or not, or are you going to clean your nails? That's our lawyer. What's the, is that a fact? Now, the lawyer, when he was up here, he made a comment that the seven percent that was negotiated should have been 10% according to, for the state law or whatever it is. And is, is that a fact, or we did something better for Kushner? Now, all our Congresswomen and men today, all yesterday voted no, because they don't want to give billionaires a tax break. I guess this Republican council and our, our Assembly President and this law firm believes we should give billionaires a tax break. But our other elected officials voted no anonymously and said no to billionaires. And that's all they said on the floor, is no to billionaires. So we gave a billionaire a tax break. Now, is it factual that there's no CO for that place yet? And there should be? Is the difference between the seven percent and 10% of what's here? So that's, that's the questions of what's going on here. Now, we're going to do a million and a half dollars for a park. Now, you could say it's tax money, UEZ money and everything, yeah. Back in the day, UEZ money was used for banana pudding building and a business that never even really opened. That's why the UEZ money was lost. But when you're talking a million and a half dollars for a park, that's a lot of money. Even spending 800,000 to redo this building now, when taxes and everything going up, electric bills went up, you raised the water bills. Now, I asked this question beginning of the year, is taxes going to go up in the school system, or are taxes going to go up here? Because you should know by now whether the taxes are going to go up or not. Even if you didn't get the budget yet, you should know. Should tell people that, hey, your taxes are going to go up, and be honest. I mean, the mayor sat here and said transparency, that he's going to be most transparent. So I've asked this question, and if you don't know yet, there's something wrong. That's incompetency. If you don't know if you're going to raise taxes yet and tell the public, because you're giving out pilots, you're selling pieces of property, and you're doing stuff, but where's there to balance a budget? So what is happening here? You're giving billionaires tax breaks, and the billionaires, does he need that money? Does the star school system need that money? Yes, they do. Those kids walked in the cold weather because there was no busing. I'm hearing right now the school, the basketball court is all, is messed up. Whether it's true or not, that's what people are saying. So if you're writing up projects and a project, the stuff's got to be fixed. How much money are we paying for those crossing guards out there? How much money a day? Does anybody got that number? How many? There's six at least crossing guards. We have people putting up barricades, we have other city employees, and what's going on here? I was around when they said Harbor Town was going to bring no children. Now we got two crossing guards, and we're feeding those people during the summer, which is fun, but they said it was going to be no children there. So all these children are coming to this town, and all these taxes are going to go up. You're already seeing what's going on. The state is cutting back on school funding. Do you expect Seerville, Woodbridge, and everything to pay the school taxes here? Because we don't pay the school taxes. If we had to pay the full share like Woodbridge, Seerville, and these other towns, you couldn't live in this town. So you and our other elected officials, Assemblywoman Lopez and Coglin, the Senate President, does he expect everybody else to pay our taxes for the rest of the generations here? Are they expected to pay us? Because every time I talk to people in Middletown, I thank them. Every time I talk to people in Union Beach, I thank them for paying my taxes. And then they get this thought, and go, why?
Thank you. Well, you have the answer for those questions that he had?
I have the one.
You can, you can begin, I'm just saying.
I'll refer everybody to Section 4.01 of the financial agreement. It says 10% of annual gross revenue. I obviously wasn't here last time. I, the, whatever the reference was to seven, I think it might have to do with the lease structure for how the property's going to get built, but I can, I, I do know that NW Financial was here, and they, they also explained that there is a minimum floor for what the city will receive for its payment in lieu of taxes. So that won't be impacted by, you know, the lease structure or anything like that. But in accordance with the state statute, Section 4.01 of the financial agreement provides that it will be 10% of annual gross revenue.
Thank you. You have the other answer?
The special improvement district and what the taxes on the businesses, I'm still awaiting that answer. But to your specific question, I know you're asking about taxes, and I know you say you want people to be transparent and honest. So what I can say unequivocally is that costs are going up. I think we see that unfortunately at our homes with eggs and everything else, we see that nationwide. With those costs being consistent, I'll also talk about unfortunately what we see arise in healthcare costs. Unfortunately for the state, I thought they saw an increase in healthcare costs of over 18%, believe it or not, with healthcare for their employees. We also know we want to take care of the employees, and with every, with all these residents, your residents here, they are also your employees that work for you, but they needed a salary increase. So we've seen an increase in costs there. So we see that cost rise. And we've also seen costs increase with pension. And I believe I also talked about liability, and there's also a cost, believe it or not, in workers' comp. So, and I didn't even talk about, which I can, because we've all seen at the pump, we see an increased cost in utility costs, like you just said, with lights, lights and gas for, fuels for our police cars. We see the few, increased fuel costs there. So unfortunately, there is increased cost for us. Now, how are we going to essentially take care of that or rectify those concerns? Taxes might be a way to do that. I know we were just talking about pilots, and let me be perfectly clear, when we talk about pilots, it's not like when I have a pilot for my property, I no longer am going to pay any taxes, because just the name, and I guess I shouldn't use the acronym, I should say exactly what it is, it's Pilot Payment in Lieu of Taxes. So I still make a payment. So the city is going to receive a payment. And in many times, like we saw with the spreadsheets on those overhead projectors there, I guess I shouldn't say projectors, a monitor. When we looked at the monitor, we saw that we're getting more money than what we're currently doing when there's a pilot in place. So the city gets more money. Now, to his point, and it's a credible point, the city gets 95% of those taxes paid, that pilot, and the county gets 5%, and the schools don't get any portion of that. But the city is making more revenue from that. But to answer his concern, with all those increased costs, somewhere we're going to have to make up the difference. And that's where we're looking at the budget now, and hopefully we can find ways to mitigate those concerns. One way is to offer pilots to bring in not only increased revenue to the city, but also you have more economic development, because more people come to the city, they'll be living here. So that'll increase, that will spur economic activity. That will take time, and again, because a building's not going to come up in one day, I realize that. So it's going to take time for us to progress to get to that, where we need to be, where things will come into balance, hopefully. But in the meantime, as we're getting there, there is that deficit or that delta from going back to school, that X that we have to make up. And that's what we're looking at now. But is there an X? Is there a delta there? Yes. We'll see how we'll accomplish that, but unfortunately, that's a reality, because of those things that we talked about, because we want to take care of our employees here, they deserve an increase. A lot of them came to the table saying, hey, we need 16%. We need 10%. And those unrealistic numbers, I would love to give our police officers, our workers, our DPW workers who come out there every day and pick up our garbage for us, we, they deserve something for that. But unfortunately, we couldn't burden all of you with a 16% increase for them, right? No matter how much work they do. But we do have to take care of them. We do see the healthcare costs raising, and that's something that unfortunately we shouldn't see, because a lot of us say, hey, we need healthcare, and we should have it, it's all right. But unfortunately, just like water, that's all right, but guess what? You have to pay for it as well. So those are the costs that we have to look into, and we have to try and mitigate those concerns and address them, and we'll see. And to your point, there might be a raise, but we'll see. We are working on it. And to his last point, I'll say is that in April, by law, we have to present that budget. So that first meeting in April.
Madam President?
Yeah.
Madam President? Well, I was going to ask you that, Mr. Green. I, I think the taxpayers need to know, I'm pretty sure there will be a tax increase across the board, not only from the city, but from the board. But I, I just want to clear something up, because I hear it a lot about busing. Perth Amboy high school students, going back to when the high school was right here, where McGinnis School is, were never bused to the, to the school. When the school moved to Eagle Avenue, the high school students were never bused. The students that lived in Eagle Rock and Spa Springs and Columbus Circle had to walk all the way down to State Street before they moved to Eagle Avenue. So as far as courtesy busing, that's a separate issue, and that involves the grammar schools and the middle schools. So at the end of the day, it seems the focus is always on the high school, about their not being bused. They never were. They never were. And Mr. Bowles, you know, when you were a freshman, you had to walk from your house.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, okay.
And that's the grammar schools. All right, so, and thank you, Mr. Green, because I was going to ask that question. But, look, rumor has it, there will be a tax increase, and rumor has it that there's going to be a tax increase from the Board of Education. Whatever that percentage is, we don't know yet.
Okay. Good. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Listen, you're taking care of business. And you're doing a good job. This is my city, and I love it. And even when one of my husbands over there is yelling at people, I, I still love him anyway. Dorothy Quatie Daniel. 650, I almost forgot my address, 651 Chamberlain Avenue, Perth Amboy, New Jersey. Thank you for reappointing me to the Housing Authority. For at least two of you that are sitting up there, I have been serving on the Housing Authority Board for longer than you've been alive. So it's been a long time. I'm going to soon start my 42nd year. And I sit on our Housing Authority, but I serve on the New Jersey, the Middle Atlantic, and the National Region of, National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials in Washington DC. And I would like to show you this medal that was given to me a couple of months ago at our convention. May I approach? That says that I have enough knowledge to train other commissioners and directors from around the country. I was nominated for this honor by several directors from around the country who thought that as a commissioner, I was doing more than my share on helping other commissioners to understand their responsibilities for, for housing and redevelopment. I, I wanted to, if I may, just comment on what the previous speakers spoke about. I want you to know, that property that the high school was on was where Delaney Holmes was, that was Housing Authority property. We negotiated with the school board, Schools Construction Corporation for months, back and forth, on building a high school here. And as an educator, and as a person who lived in public housing, it was important for me to understand and make the Schools Construction Corporation understand that if we were going to build that house, the school there, I wanted a footbridge across Route 35, Convery Boulevard. I demanded a footbridge, and I, I believe I was told that we would get that. I asked for two things, footbridge, I didn't want one kid getting hit by a car, and the other was adequate parking. We got neither. We got neither. And it's, it's sad to say that as big as that high school is, because they're saying, I've heard it said, that there, it's one of the biggest in Jersey, if not the biggest, then, and we're, we're housing all of these youngsters. I don't want to see any kids get hurt out there on Route 35. So I understand that now we have crossing guards, but we have crossing guards, if we, if we had had the footbridge like they told me we were going to have, then perhaps we wouldn't have needed the crossing guards. Once again, I just want to thank you for reappointing me to the Housing Authority. I'm doing the best that I can to continue to train commissioners across this country and to do the best job that I can for our residents. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, everyone. The first thing I want to bring up, that I went to the library Saturday, had a nice Black History Month festival. It was nice. It was really entertaining, and the library went out of their way to do this, and it was very well done. Appreciate it. So this library here does more than what other library does. They're very on top of the game. Now we come to something nobody wants to talk about, and I hate to do this, but I'm going to do it anyway. I don't know if you noticed or you have seen it, but I have seen it, there's been an increase in homeless people in Perth Amboy. Hate to bring it up, but it's coming. There's going to be more than what you thought. I've been seeing it. Government been coming out of the hospital, they've got something going on over there, and you are going to see an increase of homeless. And when April comes around, what I'm hearing, people saying, I can't afford my rent. Guess what? I'm getting evicted. People tell me this. I'm a lucky guy, you know, I manage. But what you're going to see very soon is going to be like Los Angeles. You don't want to see, it's going to be like Philadelphia, you don't want to see this. Like they say in Reconstruction Development, build, baby, build, bringing those registered voters, that's what it comes down to. You're bringing in voters, that's okay, that's part of the game. But going back to the homeless situation, you're going to have a crisis, a serious crisis. I see, my friends tell me, we look around, it's coming. You just can't sit there and watch your fingernails grow. You better start to, oh, we got to do something. And the government's coming back a lot because of abuse and waste. coming back a lot because of abuse and waste. Like what happened in California. They opened up a warehouse, okay? They were paying rent for the warehouse for five months, and homeless people were sleeping on the street. Till this homeless coalition goes in there, why are they sleeping in the street? You're paying rent for this warehouse over here for five months. You know what the excuse was? Oh, we're waiting for a certificate for occupancy. Let me get this straight. You were paying, LA County was paying five months' rent to whatever was, you know, in their pockets, and the homeless were sleeping out in the streets. That's how it works. They took advantage of the poor people. They take advantage of the homeless. Those people never knew what was going on. Why are we still on the street? They couldn't even get into the warehouse. They blocked them out. But the guy was collecting his rent money for five months, and he got a nice, nice money out of it. So I'm just letting you know now, you're going to face a very serious situation here. I'm serious about this. It's not going to look good. They're coming in, they're coming out of a, I met a guy from Burlington County, came up here. How'd you get up here? I'm from Burlington County. How'd you manage? Burlington County went to Minnesot County, Human Services, whatever, and they shut them here to Perth Amboy. They drop them off the trains, they drop them off. This has been going on for years. For years it's been going on. They drop them off. Don't worry about it. Amboy will take care of you. And this is why you're stuck with this problem. Now, when the eviction notice is coming in April, it'll be a big one. I don't, I don't know what's going to happen. You're going to have a very serious problem. I'm serious about it. I'm not playing games with this. I'm just giving you a heads up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. Iris Rodriguez, Fayette Street, Perth Amboy. I want to speak, I want to ask a couple of questions, if I may, about the driveway, the parking near driveways, okay? Most, one of the biggest problems of quality of life in this city, for me, it's parking, because that's what I hear every single day. And I drive through Perth Amboy, unlike a lot of other people, all the time. And there's always double parked cars, they're not moved, people are. Now, how is this going to work? Okay, let's say I have a driveway, and I have three cars, or two cars, okay? I park only one in the driveway, you know, on the driveway legally, and I park one on the street, okay? So that's not going to alleviate. I thought, when, when I first read this ordinance, I figured it was going to alleviate a little bit, take, take a little bit of, of, of the park, give us a little bit more parking spaces. So I'm hoping that the police department would like check, and like if they see a driveway park, and they see that there's a driveway open, you know, and if, if that car belongs, and it could be parked, and, you know, I know police officers don't have time, a lot of times they, they get calls, whatever. But if they do have time, or maybe we have a whole lot of code enforcement, if they were just knocking on the door and say, hey, how come you parked there, blocking your driveway? Why aren't you parking your driveway? You know, it's, because it's not going to alleviate anything. It's not, you know, I, the way the ordinance is written, it's, and I had figured it would be an ordinance to give us a little bit more space, you know, so, to drive, to, to park. And then another thing is, I was looking at the, I was looking at the handicap changes, the amendments, and there was a lot of cross off, you know. When you finish this amendment, will you get a clear copy? Because I was looking, I don't know, I think I have a handicap, and I do it every two years, and I think now it's going to be changed for every year. So, but the way it's, the way, you know, the way I saw the papers, when I looked on your agenda today, because I usually try to look through, through it a little bit, and I saw that it was just crossed off, a lot of things crossed off. So it was very ineligible, okay? So I would hope that if, you know, that when you do pass this or, this, this one particular ordinance, that you would clarify that, so that people that do apply for handicap, or that have to redo it, know exactly what they have to do. And, because now you have to go on. Now, another thing, and this is something that I'm bringing up, and I don't like to bring it up, because I don't like to put any blame on police officers, because I know they, I, I've dealt with them for many, many years, and they've been very helpful. But I, in 2024, in April, I, I showed a picture of a certain car in my, that lives next to my, that's the person that's next to my house, with New York license plates. To this day, this truck is like a 250, one of those double cabin cars, you know, Ford or whatever, that are big. To, to this day, this car still has New York plates, okay? Nobody has ever given them a ticket. And I think there's a state ordinance or state laws that says that within 60 days that you move in to a, you're supposed to change your registration. This guy still has New York plates. He parks every, anywhere, fire hydrants, he parks, he parks in yellow lines, and the yellow on the corners. No, he has never been given a ticket. The other day, unfortunately, my daughter parked her car by the yellow, because she came in and it was late, and she, and she got a ticket right away, which I don't complain. She went and paid it right away. I, I, I used to get many tickets before I had my handicap, and you could check it, probably. The court clerk at that time was Irma, and I was constantly paying my tickets. So, you know, like, this, this upsets me, that this car is still around. And, and I was looking at my pictures, and, and I showed it to a certain individual, and I don't want to say, you know, with the, within the police department, in 2024. And the same car still has, is still registered, it's still registered under New York plates, it's a big old truck, it takes a lot of space, it parks between driveways, or half on the street, and never gets tickets, and it's still driving, and I think that's wrong. But on another note, I'm just going to maybe take, the other day, my daughter's car got, somebody backed into it, it was one of the neighbors. We called the police officer, a young officer came, and she was fantastic. She, she saw the key ring, and she saw that the car had banged, and, you know, did some damage to my daughter's car. She found that gentleman. He happened to live next door. And she came back with him. And she didn't give him a ticket, because the damage wasn't that much. But she made him, you know, exchange the insurance, the insurance information, and, and did her job. She says, I wasn't going to arrest because she saw the key ring.
Your time is up.
And that was really, really great, you know, great. Her, her name is Officer Pogaro. She's a little, little officer, and she's, she really did her job quite well. And I, you know, I want to do it, say it publicly, because she went way beyond.
Thank you. Did you, have you called the police about that particular truck that you said?
I showed it to the police.
Well, but it's different than, and if I'm not mistaken, it's different if you just show it to somebody, but if you call, that would be a complaint.
I've called, I've called, I, when the fire chief was here, before Catano, I used to complain about the people parking in, by the fire hydrant, by the yellow. And I was told by the fire hydrant, it's up to the police officer, if he feels like giving a ticket. If, you know, if, you know, these are things that, I don't know if it's true. I used to be, work legal secretary, but I didn't do traffic, so I really don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
Good evening. I guess the first thing was about the driveway and the 16-inch and so forth. We spoke a little bit about that. But clearly, as you're aware, about five or so months ago, you've passed the ordinance where you can block your own driveway.
For homeowners.
So actually, you increased.
Can you, I was going to ask that question. Can you elaborate? Because I know there's two different ones. Can you just elaborate on the homeowners, and then this one, so that way?
Yes. What you, the action you took a couple of months ago allows you to block your own driveway. So that's why now, if a police officer's driving down the road, and they see a blocked driveway, they're not going to enforce that, because it very well may be the owner or the authorized person to park their vehicle there. So they will not engage in that, which would go a little bit like we talked about with 16 inches and so forth. If there's not a complaint from the individual who owns the driveway, then we, you know, we can move on. So in this particular instance, where you're blocking, you know, you have a driveway, you have a car in the driveway, you can now pick up a parking spot by blocking your own driveway. So that is an action that you took. Clearly, that would increase that. The 16 inches, yes, that's going to, if someone parks a little too closely to a small driveway, and sometimes people have a difficulty getting out, that's when they call us for that. As far as the registration out of state, yes, there is a statute for that. However, do they live here? Do they work there? Is it a registered vehicle out of New York that they just come here and stay overnight? There's many variables to that. And that would have to be done during a motor vehicle stop, not just a vehicle parked on the side of the road. So we just can't go around to New York plates if I see them for six months, and now give them summonses and so forth, because we don't know the circumstances. We don't know if they live there, if they don't live there. So there's many, if you will, loopholes in that particular law that would allow for that. And it's difficult to, very difficult to, to enforce that because of all the variables. As far as any of the other things, anything parked on a yellow, fire hydrants with being an option, that's not an option. If we get called, or the officer sees a parking violation, or even parking enforcement officers, they issue the summons, and we tow for blocking fire hydrants. For your normal yellow lines, we don't tow for that unless it's absolutely a concern, or if it's immediately causing a public safety concern. If not, they do get issued summonses. And then, again, we do tow from, from fire hydrants. We don't tolerate, there's zero tolerance on that.
Thank you.
I have a question, sorry. And just to reiterate, in case, you know, some of the members maybe weren't here in the past. Handicap, can you repeat the process, how we're going to get this information? Now, I know you had said it in the past, but can you repeat that again, that process?
Sure, absolutely. So if you are currently, when I say currently, prior to this, a couple of months ago when this was done, if you were by paper, what will happen is, when it comes close to your renewal, you'll be sent a certified letter in the mail, that this is the process now for logging on to the computer and doing that. So what will happen for anyone who, once they get on the computer, it's going to be an email that's sent 30 days out, actually, three months ahead of time, saying, hey, in three months, your, your time's going to be up. You get one email. Within 60, 60 days, you get one more email. 30 days, you get another email, if you haven't gone on and done this. And then every week thereafter, on the 30th, on your last month, you'll get an email saying, you're up, you're up, here's what you need to do, here's what you need to do. And there still will be an additional 30-day grace period past that, where you get all of these emails and so forth. Then, yes, it will be a yearly renewal, but you would log on and basically just upload your documentation. No need to come visit here anymore, what have you. You can be home and do this, you can be on vacation and do it, whatever it needs to be. It all can be done, uploading documents and so forth via the, your cell phone, or computer, or whatever you have available to you. And then, and we still also have the ability, as I mentioned, to go to Parking Utility Office at any point in time. If the person's not sure, they can always go there, and they will be assisted, and with the kiosk there to be able to, to enter that information and, and get the proper permit that you need.
Yeah. And something that I just brought up to Mr. Green is to kind of have a link right on the homepage of the city website, that it will be easier for people to find it. You know, where to go to apply, to fill out the paperwork for that particular.
Yes, I'm pretty sure it's a link off of the Parking Utility website.
Right. And I thank the Council President for letting us know that. And Lissette, our Chief of Staff, said she was going to do that tonight, to make sure it's prominently displayed on the website.
So it's easier.
So people know.
So it's easier to find.
And then the other thing I want to say, Chief, and thank you for this, there was a great reduction, because I remember Councilman Torres always bring it up. There were so many handicapped spots out here, more than Jersey City. And you want to say we reduce it by over 200?
There was, yeah, it was additional 290-something, I believe, that were taken off. That may have been, people passed away, may have fallen through the cracks, or whatever, have been through, you know, through the years. And the other thing that this does now also is, depending, as I mentioned, depending on the timing, you could go, you know, if someone were to pass away immediately after they recycled, or, or pay, they could go two to three years, and have that spot tied up, and not actually have someone to, that's supposed to legally be in that spot. Now, the most we're going to see is 12 months. Is the most we're going to see, because they'll have to re-up, and it'll get sent to them and so forth. And if they don't, we, we are, of course, going to visit them also, knock on the door if they're still there, what have you, and see if that vehicle's still registered and so forth. But what we've been seeing a lot is a lot of abuses of the, of the spots, where people save. And I'm sure you've all heard the same complaints we get, where they have a handicap spot during the day, as soon as that spot opens up, they'll back up and park in another spot, and leave their handicap spot open, and wait for somebody from the household, then they'll move it up. And so, that's an abuse of a spot. It, it really is. So they get one warning, they get photographs, they get a warning letter sent to them and so forth, and they're explaining to them, next time that this, this happens, you're going to get, you know, we're going to have the recommend for it to be, the sign to be taken away, which is allowed in, in the ordinance. And that has happened. I just saw two, two emails today of warnings for people doing that. So, again, it, it's, it's a privilege, which people need to understand. And I understand people need it, but it is a privilege, because it's not to be abused, and not to be, just as your own private parking spot, so I can take a spot for another one, because it affects every one of us.
Thank you.
Have a question. Not regarding, just regarding parking in general, there have been some comments made and concerns regarding a surge in tickets during drop-off and pickup near the high schools. Is that accurate? And then my last question, more like comment, is about the electric vehicles. I know you did, you have mentioned that in the past, but just can you reiterate the safety component of that, as there has been a lot of notices, I know, on our social media? And, yeah, so about those two questions. Thank you.
Sure. First we'll start with is the, is the parking and the moving violations in the area of schools. We all know, as we spoke about, there is an increase of parents driving to school now, and driving their kids to school for other things that have happened. So we have a lot more traffic near the schools than we have in the past. And I think we've all experienced that throughout the city. So we've had the learning curve. I mean, school's been started since September. We're explaining to parents, you got to keep moving, you got to keep moving, because you're backing everything up, especially over by our building, fire trucks trying to get out, police cars, cars trying to get out. It's, they need to keep the, the traffic flowing. So warned, reiterated, explained to the people multiple times.
So all were warnings prior?
Yes, all verbal warnings, got to move the car, you got to move it, these types of things. So what's occurring now on these habitual offenders, any officers will tell me, they've spoken to this person two or three times, and they stopped their car right in the middle of the road. I don't care, I'm going to get my kid. And now, 200 more cars piled up behind them and so forth, because they're going out to get their person, their kid. And that's what they do.
Got it. Because my question was more, it has, somehow is very concerned over the surge of parking tickets without warnings.
Yeah, well, again, all of the parents, because they're still coming, giving to kids in, so we've had a period of months that we've been trying to educate the individual drivers, and it's just causing many, many issues. So what will happen is, the officers at that point in time will take the license plate, and then they will send you the, the summons in the mail, because at that point in time to stop and engage the driver, get paperwork, you're just extending that time, and extending that backup, and everything else that goes. So it's basically, you had the warning, and the same officers are assigned to the schools, so they know, you know, this, this purple car comes every day, and we've talked to this person and so forth, and they continue to do it, then they're going to get the license plate, and they'll, they'll be issued the, the summonses in the mail. And again, we try with, with the, the warnings, trying to deter behavior, correct behavior, and if it doesn't happen, then this is, that's the, the next step is, is issuing of the summonses.
Is, is it safe to say that it's, that's the same process for all the schools across the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, clearly, depending on where the schools are, you see more noticeable traffic issues, Convery Boulevard, clearly, Hall Avenue, those types of things. There may be other schools, you know, let's say, for instance, Ukrainian Assumption School, side street, maybe not as many people and so forth. It may not be as much of a traffic impact as it is on the major roadways and, and so forth. Amboy Avenue, with Himaleski School, those types of, of areas. And, and again, the other thing, too, to try to alleviate this, we've attempted to work with the schools, and it's a very important point, as, as Councilman Puccio mentioned, where there's no busing, or not much busing at, at the, at the high school, we've requested to be able to use that bus lane to get people to go around the school, so we can get people off of the street and so forth. And that's not happening. It was not approved, just like Rose Lopez.
Got it. Yeah, that was my question. What are we doing as a city to mitigate any barriers, considering courtesy busing is not?
We tried. And we said, listen, if your buses aren't using this anymore, why can't we have the parents do that drop-off, go around the school? Now, we can stack an additional 50, in some cases, maybe up to 100 cars, around the school and so forth. And it was, it was not, it's basically, it's our problem, because the, the people are on our streets, and they don't want them on their property.
It's also a safety issue. If, you know, there's people in the parking lots, there's parents, there's children crossing. And so, you know, I think that that conversation can continue, but I was on that side at that point, and it is a safety issue as well.
In certain respects, in certain schools, absolutely. But like the Rose Lopez School, there's nobody that goes around that school at all. There's nobody that, the buses used to go around, but there's no crossing of anything through the back there, or anything else. So that was one of the potentials of, of using it there. High school, the same thing. You have those, those couple of, of walkways that go in, that don't necessarily cut across that stacking area, because whether they're crossing there, or they're crossing on Dorothy Street, we're going to have the same thing. We're going to have a bunch of cars on, on Dorothy Street, and all the students have to cross that street to get there. And in certain, in certain instances, they're less controlled, because it's anywhere on the street they can cross, versus the, the pathway of the, the gates that they'd be going through in the school. So it would be even tighter there. So, you know, we've, we've tried to engage on that, and we just haven't been able to, to come to any agreement on any of that. We've, we've tried to engage on that and we just haven't been able to, uh, to come to any agreement on any of that.
Hopefully we can, and then for the electric scooters?
Electric scooters, yes. We're working in conjunction with the fire department, as I know Chief Mullin has, uh, some things to say on this also. Um, there was an, an incident which was shared and was, that was a, where one of the scooters had caught fire. And a fortunate officer was nearby, was able to get that scooter away from the building as fire department was, was responding and arriving to extinguish that fire. Uh, it was further found that these scooters were being sold in Perth, Ambway. They were, um, uh, being sold illegally. They were not approved, they were not type accepted, UL acceptance or anything else for the state of New Jersey, uh, for the United States, let alone the state of New Jersey. So there were many, many issues. So again, uh, the fire department had gone in and they, in the auspices of the Fire Prevention Bureau and fire, and worked with the police department. We have now, uh, well over seventy plus, um, of these particular e-bikes that, and scooters that we have seized and have on the control. We're working with, again, with fire department, with state officials, with, uh, federal officials to get these things looked into and, uh, underwriters laboratory and, and many of the commuter safety, uh, safety commission to get to the bottom of this. But they were actually manufacturing scooters in certain instances. They were putting pieces together from other ones. They had, uh, untype accepted and, uh, not, uh, allowed to be used in the United States for varying different voltages between the batteries and the chargers. So it was certainly a recipe for disaster. Unfortunately, we've had that particular scooter, but there's been other incidents throughout, uh, throughout the state that are having these issues too. So, um, immediately once this was found, we identified the particular scooters that we were talking about and it's still ongoing, we're still finding others. Um, I had dispatched our community policing officer to all the schools to identify any of these scooters that may be there or e-bikes or whatever they may be at the schools to identify them and make sure that we worked with them and explain to them that these are, uh, are dangerous. And we do have that information that also got out on, uh, on, on social media and so forth for it. But if it's okay with you, I'd invite, uh, Chief Mullin to come forward and speak a little bit about on the fire side of things, how he's been able to do that. Um, but we are, um, in fact, in, under working a criminal aspect of it also. So not only with us, with, uh, criminal, local criminal charges, but also, um, charges on, um, you know, potential in the state and the federal side for other things that, that they may be doing.
Well, I'm glad, uh, the ordinance that I think we previously passed regarding the sale of those. Batteries. Batteries, I remember we did that.
Yes, and actually.
Last year or the year before.
Absolutely, and Chief Mullin, uh, got a recent, um, from another organization, uh, got a recent, and we're going to be putting that forward too to ask you to, uh, just strengthen that. And, and there's another one, as a matter of fact, Hoboken passed another one just recently. So we're going to put a couple of those together, but St. Lobe's already gone through that and we're going to recommend for, uh, some changes.
Just to tighten it up a little bit.
Yes, absolutely, to try to just tighten it up even a little bit more, some of the loopholes that are in there with the charging and, uh, and those types of things. But that, that ordinance certainly, certainly helped.
Yeah.
By all means. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you. Chief?
Good evening. As Police Chief stated, we've been working on this for thirteen days now, the fire investigation unit, almost sometimes eight, ten hours a day, working with a lot of different state, Division of Fire Safety and federal agencies. Um, we've had Consumer Product Safety Commission come into the firehouse Friday where we were taking pictures documenting some of these, these bikes. And all bikes are in violation of our city ordinance. Currently, New Jersey does not have a law prohibiting the sale of non-regulated items. However, if you're selling a non-regulated item and you're providing a UL test report or saying it's this when it's not, that's where it becomes, I'm pretty sure, a criminal act. So that's why the police department's heavily involved in this. Um, there were three different stores out of the four that sell electric bikes and scooters in town that were found to have these units, um, Friday night. We, uh, we hit up a third location, took another two dozen e-scooters that had not been there a few days earlier when we did a visit. So surprised they were back on the floor Friday night, but working with UL and, uh, some other agencies, we were able to identify from a prior visit, what was told was a, a proof sticker, which they validated as, uh, it was fake. So when we went there and, you know, our investigation, can't go into too much details because like I said, this turns into a, a major police matter. But on the fire side, I've been sitting here putting out some fire notices. New York City has a very good flyer about what to look for when you buy an e-mobility device. Because it, it doesn't have to be tested by UL, but it's tested to a UL standard. So there's companies like SGS that can test an e-mobility product to a UL standard. But in those test records, it will say, this sticker has to be on this model device. So if you buy a, you know, ABC one, two, three model, uh, the test record for that says, hey, it has to be an ABC one, two, three model. And it actually shows a picture of the sticker that has to be on that device. And that sticker has to be permanently affixed. So it's not something you can just walk up, peel off, or you walk into the store, it's hanging off. And, uh, if there's nothing on it at all, that's a violation of our city ordinance. And like I said, Perth, Ambway has that ordinance, Hoboken is, is passing one. Union City has a very, very strong lithium ion battery ordinance, which encompasses much, much more. So we've actually forwarded that to the legal department to add an actual lithium ion battery ordinance, uh, which should be in the March meetings. So that's an actual ordinance we shared with all the fire departments in towns in Middlesex County. Um, we reached out to Assemblywoman Lopez because there's been some bills on a state level, uh, since twenty twenty-two that didn't look like they've gone anywhere, but they all have grown legs in the last couple of days. And I think the, the recent spike is the water, as the weather's getting warmer, people got these e-bikes, these e-scooters over Christmas, they're starting to use them. They're starting to charge batteries that were never charged. There's an uptick in fires and it's not just in Perth, Ambway, it's in some other towns. So, uh, we've, we've recognized an immediate fire safety concern that was not here prior, but New York City did put a permanent ban on non-tested, non-accredited, uh, devices throughout the city, which looked like they've come across, you know, the outer bridge and some other transportation methods from the city and they have, they found a market in New Jersey. So we're, we're, we're working with Division of Fire Safety and, you know, Assemblywoman Lopez, the state legislature and the Senate will get involved to put a statewide ban, but that might take another year. So the recommendation is have an ordinance in place, which should take a month. Then your fire marshals can go out there, identify what's not approved and it could save that community. So, you know, dozens of lives were lost and, and tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of property were damaged in New York City. So let's, let's take their lesson and, and protect ourselves, so. That's where we stand, but our Facebook page will be shareable, so share, reshare, you know, spread the word into those people that bought them prior to the ordinance which went into effect in the fall.
Something.
So somewhere in the fall, so had you bought something prior, hey, there was no, there was no ban on that. But we're going to put it out there, hey, if you have something, it matches a sticker that's a fake, you should discontinue use immediately. You know, I don't know where it, it takes effect where you ask for a return or whatnot, but, you know, the stuff that they were selling, you know, was, was a quarter of the price of a, a high-end regulated bike. So, you know, just because you got something cheap and they're, they're very good salesmen. I, I walked into the stores, they tried selling me stuff that I knew was, was not good, I will tell you that. But, uh, you know, that's just me being fun and, uh, letting them do their spiel. But, you know, they could sell what they want back in, before the ordinance, now they can't.
So now, just want to explain to the public and make it clear to the public so that they understand those who already have these, uh, e-bikes, um, it's, they, the fire doesn't just start while it's plugged, it could just. What, how does it, you know, explain to the public that it could just ignite once they're riding it or while it's plugged in and, you know, so that way they, they're aware. I mean, their house could go on fire or they could be driving it and all of a sudden go on fire.
Yeah, absolutely, um, like a lithium ion battery, you can have a name brand, it should have a matching charger. The charger should match the same volt. So if it's like a thirty-six volt battery, it should have a thirty-six volt charger and it should say, if it says Highboy on the bike, it should say Highboy on the charger. So everything should be matching, that's key one. Um, key number two is if you do have a product, whether it be a, a power drill, you're, you know, uh, a e-bike and e-scooter, only charge that in areas of your house that's not near the doors and not near any combustibles. So you could have everything approved regardless, only charge that while you're awake. Don't charge them overnight because, hey, you're, you're driving an e-bike and e-scooter. You could hit a pothole, you could hit a bump with the scooters, I think it's the worst because the, the battery packs are on the undercarriage of the scooter. So just think of a kid in a, a curb or something like that, banging it over and over again, same thing, you drop a drill. You know, that, that thing, if it does damage, a lithium ion battery could have a damage and two years later can go into what's called a thermal runaway where it just heats up out of nowhere, whether it be charging or not. And then like I said, that, that's why it's very important that, you know, you monitor stuff. But make sure there's, you know, smoke detectors in the area of your house that you're, that you're charging the stuff. Don't charge it overnight. If you ever smell anything weird or you see it smoking, immediately get out of the house, call nine-one-one so we can deal with it. Uh, as, as the case with the fire two weeks ago, once we, we put the fire out, the batteries were still reigniting. These things can just burn and burn and burn. And that's, that's on a small scale with.
Yeah, I understand that.
Imagine a, an electric vehicle with a lot more batteries, uh, bigger problem. But, uh, hazmat has to come, wear air packs.
Difficult to, to distinguish those.
Yeah, a scooter is, is small, but those batteries have to be picked up, contained by county hazmat, packed with something called cell block, sealed. Um, you know, an electric vehicle is a whole different ballgame. We, you know, that's why we bought the, the firefighting blanket to, to sort of smother it and hope for the best. But like I said, that, that fire eventually will come with a, a electric vehicle. But with these scooters, yeah, it's like I said, you have something that's, that's damaged, you want to make sure, like, you know, don't use it if it's damaged. Like you hit something real hard with even a good one, it's time to retire, you know, bring it to wherever you bought it and, and they should be able to replace out the battery if it's a legit battery company. But with the, with the stuff that we're flagging as potentially fake, we said, don't use them anymore. You know, you bought a product that might have had a fake sticker and it might catch on fire. So immediately discontinue charging it. You might be able to take it back to where you bought it from, they might exchange it for something, uh, appropriate. The one store where we had the Alpha Z3 bikes, that store is willing to take those, the, I think they sold about seventeen of them because they only got them in the middle of December. So they sold seventeen, when we reached out, that, that one store was fully compliant and, uh, with, with our requests and they've exchanged them for UL-approved scooters. So they're taking them back, they're making good on what that, they're, they're cooperative, but some other places might not do that, so. Now we'll, we'll have to figure out on the civil end where that goes, but, uh, we're just saying, hey, if you have this stuff that's flagged, don't charge it because it could result in a fire.
Yeah, well, thank you, thank you for what you guys.
One thing I just want to point out, um, as you mentioned about that is the cells, if they go bad, don't throw them out in the regular trash. The lithium ion cells.
There's, there's state legislation that you can't dispose lithium ion batteries, so.
Yeah, because if they go in a compact or they get crushed, then you're going to have.
Where would you suggest, uh, them to bring it to the?
Battery, they have battery disposal locations, county has.
We'll, we'll get information on that.
Right, so that would be important to get information on where to dispose them properly.
A lot, a lot of new information that we're only becoming aware of like very quickly. So as fast as we're getting information, we're trying to put it out there and if we verify certain things, they're no good.
That's good to know, because a lot of people don't know where to, you know, and how to dispose of it properly.
They may be scared, they may have the spike, throw the whole thing out.
Yeah, it's not like, like I said, it's also, you know, it could be your drills, household drills, whatever. The batteries, it's only holding in charge for five minutes, you think throw it in the trash? No, it can't be disposed, it's illegal to dispose of, uh, yeah, cell phones too. Be very careful, even with a cellphone, if you're charging it, make sure the cellphone's not on your pillow or on your blanket. That should be on a, like a table or something like that because they do heat up while they're charging. The same thing with the e-bikes and e-scooters, uh, while you're using it and these kids are going full throttle home, you're using it using the maximum energy, so that, that battery will get hot. So it, it could be while it's in use and like, that's the case the other Thursday, just start smoking, bursting the flames. Good thing it was outside versus in a house.
Right. Yeah, we're blessed.
Yeah, especially, yeah, their, their scooters could be for a certain weight too. And I said, you put an overload of, uh, people on there or just somebody that's overweight from, uh, what's rated as, you know, it could over-stress the battery.
Right.
So, but as we get information, we'll put it out there, just keep sharing it.
Thank you. And this is, uh, something like this happened, but it's giving us the opportunity to educate our, our residents. Um, that's the good part of, of this conversation and also of the incident that happened.
And with the two bills that they passed through the committee, one of them talks about the Division of Fire Safety will do an educational campaign. So it's like I said, we're sort of on the front line here, but statewide, all, all fire departments are going to, you know, be involved with that and the state will put out information, so. And if you want to update on Hall Ave, we had, uh.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Small explosion last week, but, uh, that was due to an individual that had drilled into the sidewalk between two thirty-two.
Let me ask you a question about that.
Yeah.
Was there whoever drilled into the sidewalk and it was doing construction, did it have permits?
There was no mark out.
No mark outs, so what I'm saying is, so is code enforcement here?
I can tell you, we were working with code enforcement that day, uh, that individual was criminally charged.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, besides whatever they may wind up with on the city side of things, he was criminally charged with causing the risk of widespread injury and damage and the chemical leak itself by, uh, drilling.
Right, and I mean, it could have been a lot worse.
Absolutely.
So.
Across the street from the school.
Let me get this, this is like in the middle of the day, right?
Yes, yes, I was at work.
In the middle of the day on a very, very busy street in the city of Perth, Ambway, and nobody noticed this? Nobody noticed that they were working without permits and no mark outs?
I will say, there was a fence, so when we arrived on scene, the, the glass was blown out to the street, there was smoke coming from the building and we heard the gas leak, we couldn't see it. So if he was doing work, it was behind a fence in the alley.
I, I just want to point something out.
Understood.
Couple of years ago, I was helping my father-in-law. We lived in Ford, he was digging a trench on his property, we were going to connect the sewer line out to the street. Right? He wasn't digging that hole an hour before code enforcement showed up on a dead-end street. So my point is, you know, we should be vigilant that, first of all, that nobody got killed that day. And second of all, you know, it's, construction goes on all, every day in Perth, Ambway. And how many times do you realize that you're watching somebody do something and there's no permits? So I'm not talking about the fire department or the police department, just talking about in general. We got away with something that day, that nobody got killed. But it won't be the first time something like that has happened. People working, untrained people working, uh, especially something like that.
Yeah, and I will, I will say with that, he drilled one hole into the sidewalk, so it wasn't a big operation, but one hole into the sidewalk and he hit where the, the two-inch gas line was. And that was a hundred-year-old building that certain areas of the, the restaurant, the storefront, didn't have a full, it was on a slab. So there were certain areas where it was just dirt. So that gas migrated through the dirt into the building.
Wow.
Ultimately finding ignition stores and, and blowing up. But there, there was kids walking by the front of that store when it did happen. I believe there was some, some video footage of that. And he, instead of calling nine-one-one, and this is the public service announcement, if you smell gas or you hear a gas leak, there could be gas you see bubbling up in a puddle, um, call nine-one-one as fast as can be so we can get out there. Uh, the gentleman that called, um, found the gas leak, unfortunately, he called Elizabeth Town Gas instead of us. So he actually did evacuate the building, but when he was on the phone with the gas company, the actual explosion occurred. So gas company heard that and they were on scene within minutes, that's why we were able to secure that leak.
Did this guy actually have a license, was he a licensed contractor? Or just some guy that was a handyman that just decided to do something?
That's, that's still part of the investigation with the BPU and, and police, so I don't have any, uh, details to reveal on that, but I could assure you, everybody will, uh, be held accountable as far as it deserved.
We do have their names, we have everybody and the actual, uh, building owner was the one that was charged. But we do have additional people that you said, the investigation is still going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you have more?
I don't know if you, if you, chiefs, if you recall the big fire in New York City a couple of years ago, where an unlicensed contractor was doing work on a gas line. The line exploded, it was, I think, a coffee shop on the bottom and the building went up and, and people were killed.
Yes.
An unlicensed contractor.
Yes.
Now, I venture to say that that could happen here, when people do stuff with unlicensed people.
Absolutely, and again, like I said, it was across the street from the school, had that been another one hour earlier, how many hundreds of kids would have had on, on the street and cars in the sidewalk and a hundred and half street names?
Same thing, had that not found an ignition source on the first floor, that gas would have went to the second floor until it found something and there would have been a much bigger explosion, so. Unfortunately, uh, something was on luck's side to, to get nobody killed and.
Thank God.
Just love.
Thank God. Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else?
Good evening, everyone, Del Tofek, three forty-one, Quopex Street. So I know you guys are going to discuss the towing issue. Um, it's been a year to date now, um, since the last meetings that we had regarding towing. Um, I would like to make a suggestion to possibly, um, limit the license of towers in Ambway, um, to whatever number it is. Just actually put a number on it because right now, it could go from five to twenty to thirty and there's no limit on it. Also, the town being congested and the police being understaffed, I think that every towing company on the police tow list should have a certain criteria as far as equipment. They should have at least a few trucks in order, two or three, minimal three, in order to accommodate everyone and respond fast, especially with the congestion that's going on now. Um, with that being said, the only thing I want to ask, um, it was brought to my attention, the police department just purchased a brand-new tow truck that just arrived recently. And I don't remember seeing anything on the agenda or any approval for a tow truck. The first truck that was purchased, it was on the agenda and it was approved as a tow truck. I'm just curious as how this was purchased. Was it purchased as a truck or as a tow truck? Because I don't remember seeing anything on it. And I'll, I'll let you guys go with a short notice, thank you.
Thanks.
Is Mr. Green?
That was.
Is that true?
There was a tow truck.
There was no tow truck that I could ever recall being on the agenda.
It was on, it was a wheel, I'm sorry, it was a wheel lift truck, as I mentioned, as we replaced that nineteen ninety wheel lift that we had. It's a wheel lift truck, it's for fleet ordinance for our department, police department, yes.
Yes, we spoke when we were on the agenda prep about that, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello.
Okay, you can bring it down.
I'm not actually from Perth Amboy, but.
But we need your name and your address, please.
My name is Jenicaal Jacme. I live in Somerville, 382 Williams Street. So I actually work with Coming Home, I'm in the Middlesex County Building at Bayard Street. So I heard this gentleman's comment about.
Okay, you have to address the council.
I heard about what he said about the increase in homelessness. We work with the homeless, so I just wanted to say that he's actually correct. It is increasing, Perth Amboy actually participated in the recent annual point in time count. So two things, I had a question about what he said and then also about something else, one of your ordinances. So I, I didn't actually hear a question when he was talking, but my question is a follow-up of what he said. I'm interested to know, is the city of Perth Amboy actually going to anticipate if federal funding is cut? Are you going to do anything, like, for example, the YMCA, right? They have a shelter, they have the Prosperity Center, they run a food bank. They're actively doing prevention by doing diversion, they're also assisting the homeless. Coming home where I work, we work directly with what the YMCA, they're one of our community partners. Coming home is actually the chair, co-chair of the Continuum of Care from Middlesex County. So I was wondering, are you actually planning on, and this obviously would happen in a closed session, but are you planning on doing anything if for some reason federal funding is cut? Because we're actually waiting for our funds to come in in July from HUD. So we're actually on pins and needles because we're helping the homeless and we don't know what we're gonna do if we lose our federal funding. We'll be completely dependent upon private donors, hospitals, philanthropists, whoever's willing to help us. And so I was curious, you know, you're, you're spending a million dollars on a renovation of this building and I understand there's some sort of issue, he mentioned about the ceiling, but to me, it's kind of like you're gonna put money into renovating a building, but are you going to, you know, help the homeless? The homeless of Perth Amboy, not like the gentleman he mentioned from Burlington, but as a whole, you know, they're your citizens. I grabbed the last pamphlet downstairs about rent control and I think that's actually great. That's one way to actually do prevention. So that's my one question about that. And then I was curious, if you're gonna start charging fees for the mercantile ordinance, where are those funds gonna go? I was just curious, I didn't hear, you know, I, I get the purpose of charging them fees and then the annual fee, but you didn't say where the money was gonna go to. Is it gonna just go to the city? Is it gonna go to a fund? I mean, I could even say, like, maybe you would want to put it towards a homeless trust fund in Perth Amboy. That, that actually would be helpful. So those are my, those are my questions, this is my first time doing this.
Okay.
But yeah, making my rounds at the, the city council meetings of the most populous cities. So we can try and understand what is being done to help the homeless because we are actually working on coordinated prevention to not only help the people that are homeless now, but to work to prevent the actual homelessness from happening. And so as he mentioned, there's inflation, he mentioned that too. So if the city can actually come up with a plan, you know, then if anything happens, you could actually go from there and implement it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any, you have anything to add to that or no? I mean, it's just for her question, I mean, I don't expect you to have.
Okay, I'll let you start then.
So I'm prepared, but just to address some of the projects that we undertake to address homelessness or the prevention of homelessness. The city receives home funding through the Housing and Urban Development. Federal funding, CDBG and home funding. At this point, we give, we collaborate with nonprofit organizations. There's actually an open invitation and application process for the nonprofit organizations to apply for funding through the city. And that, those funds are used for arrears and rental assistance to prevent homelessness. So that's one of the main goals of that funding and right now, most of that budget goes.
Can you repeat, what was that before you said, before rental assistance?
Rental assistance and arrears, so, you know, for, you know, back rent, back rent and relocation assistance. And right now, the agencies that have received funding from us traditionally have been Puerto Rican Association, the YMCA Center for Prosperity, the Jewish Renaissance Foundation. In addition to the rental assistance, there's also utility assistance. We also receive additional home funds through ARPA funding. We got about 1.9 million and that was specifically through public hearing. We agreed to use those funds and the federal government approved the project for a non-congregate shelter. We have nine years to expend those funds, we've had them for about two or three. We've been working with the nonprofits, specifically with the Center for Prosperity and the YMCA to identify a location for a non-congregate shelter, which is a requirement of shelter, sheltering now from the federal government with that money. So it's not your traditional center or shelter where it's just one big open room like we do for Code Blue. Non-congregate shelter calls for individual rooms. So we are working to identify a location for that. We do have some time, but we have been working diligently, working on that. And just to point out, we, we do work with the county and with all the nonprofits as much as we could. Diane Roman obviously does a really good job with human services and, and supporting that population. I do want to note that in addition to that, we're working on creating new affordable housing opportunities like through partnerships with Habitat for Humanity, et cetera. So there's a lot going on, we know that there's a rise in cost and in cost of living and it's specifically with housing. So we will continue to do what we can to pump more money into it. And we know that there may be, or we anticipate, federal cuts to that funding. You know, when there's a different party in, in control, there may be changes to that. So we are anticipating those changes and are looking for additional funding sources. I will also say, we have our Housing Trust Fund that through development fees, we collect monies that go into our Housing Trust Fund to specifically address rehabilitation of old home housing stock and rental assistance. So there's a good chunk of change in, in that pot as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just wanted to make a comment, Tashi, I'm glad that Director Vasquez, that you mentioned the Habitat for Humanity. I think that's super crucial and look online, there's a lot of information, especially on the City of Perth Amboy website, Instagram, lottery, especially for low-income residents and of course, preference to veterans. So I appreciate that and as well as the utility assistance. The city is doing great publishing all that information and, and getting that out to residents.
Thank you, and on tonight's agenda, the property on Lori Street, the 400 Lori will be, if indeed you agree to sell that property, they will be partnering with Habitat to build another single-family low to moderate affordable home.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close, oh, sorry.
Hello, Council, Daniel, 601 Cornell Street, Perth Amboy. I wasn't speaking, planning on speaking, I just wanted to voice support for that girl, the woman who did speak earlier, the idea to give the business permit, that money to allocate it to a homeless fund. So if you aren't already familiar, you probably are familiar that Perth Amboy, 20% of our population is below the poverty line. So it is a serious problem in our town, it is only going to increase, especially with gentrification. And I would like to thank Councilwoman Cruz for voting against the past deal with Kushner because that does increase gentrification in our town and it could have been allocated a lot better to provide jobs for Perth Amboy residents and not to give basically a tax cut for a millionaire. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? I need a motion to go on closed session.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Okay, after the closed session, we'll come back, finish the caucus and then start the new council meeting. Thank you. Uh, finish the caucus and then start the new council meeting. Thank you.
Are we ready?
Yes.
I get bonus points for talking about that outside of the meeting.
I can hear.
The whole thing over there, I didn't say nothing over here.
Okay, ready? I need a motion to come back from ca- uh, closed session.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? I need a motion to adjourn the caucus meeting.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're ready for, uh, round number two. So, this is the council meeting for February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five. Presiding Officer of the Council, Milady Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the City Clerk's office and on the city's website indicating that today's meeting is being held in the Council Chambers, City Hall, two sixty High Street, right after the caucus and closed session. Right now is nine o'clock.
Nine oh one.
Nine oh one. Okay. We did the topics, we did the interviews today. Uh, we will, we will be making a decision later on, um, on another meeting for that particular board. Um, okay. Oops, no.
Gotta start with the.
Rock call.
Well, you gotta read your little spiel.
I'm tired. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices you need to make a telephone call. Please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. We're focusing, focusing now, so. Now, rock call.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Present.
Councilwoman Morales.
Present.
Councilman Puccio.
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta.
Present.
And Council President Tejeda.
Present. Let's stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, please watch over this governing body. Give us the wisdom to make the right decision for our residents and for our city. I also want to pray for those that are in desperate need of shelter, of food, and, um, that are having a hard time during these difficult times that we're living in. Also, let's pray for our officers, for our troops that are away from their home, for their family, and also the ones that are defending our freedom right here in our nation. And please protect them all and bring them home safely to their family. And with that, I say amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Like I was saying, the Citizen Public Safety Advisory Board, we had two interviews today, but we will be making a decision later on on the, I guess, coming meetings. All right, ordinance, public hearing, five minutes maximum per speaker, per ordinance. Number one, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces For Use By Handicapped Person, ordinance number three-eighty-dash-eighty-five, and amendments adopted July second, nineteen eighty-five, also known as chapter two-fifty-five of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, and this is about deletion. I need a, a motion to open for public hearing.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Anybody wants to speak on it? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces For Use By Handicapped Persons, ordinance number three-eighty-dash-eighty-five, and amendments adopted July second, nineteen eighty-five, also known as chapter two-fifty-five of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, and this is about amendment. I need a motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? It's open to the public. Anybody? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move it.
Ladies?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? I need a motion to adopt. Concentrate.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number three, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled Vehicles and Traffic, ordinance number one-ninety-four-dash-seventy-eight, as amended, adopted Sep- September nineteen nineteen seventy-eight, also known as chapter four-fourteen of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, and this is about parking near driveways. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? It's open to the public. Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move it.
Second.
Oh, that was Stacy that time.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Rock call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Agenda, public comment, citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizens shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? It's open to the public on agenda item only. Seeing none, I need a motion to close public comments.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Bits. Bits were received on January twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five for the following: City Hall Interior Renovation Phase Three, J and M Quality Construction, seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-four-hundred dollars; McCully Construction Company, Inc., eight-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand; S-Horan USA Contractor, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-five-hundred; T-Con Construction, one-million-three-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars; Epic Management, one-million-fourty-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars; Farrows, one-million-two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand; Costa Painting and Construction, one-million-one-hundred-and-five-thousand; Nella Carpentry, seven-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand; Office Consulting, one-million-three-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars. Reports, Fallon Barczewski Tax Collector submitted the monthly report for collection for the month of January twenty-twenty-five. Number two, Jill A. Goldie, CFO Controller, submitted the check report for the month of January twenty-twenty-five in the total amount of ten-million-two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars with sixty-six cents. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. An ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex amending and supplementing chapter four administration of government, Article twelve, Department of Human Services, ordinance number fifteen-twenty-two-dash-twenty-ten, as amended August eleventh, twenty-ten, of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy to update, please, and provide additional regulation related to criminal history, background check. I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Rock call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces For Use By Handicapped Persons, ordinance number three-eighty-dash-eighty-five, and amendments adopted July second, nineteen eighty-five, also known as chapter two-fifty-five of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. This is about deletions. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number three, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled Ordinance Fixing and Establishing a Schedule of Salaries and Salary Ranges and Increments for the Perth Amboy Fire Officers' Association, FMBA Local Two-Fifty-Eight, ordinance number two-eighteen-dash-seventy-nine, as amended, adopted July third, nineteen seventy-nine. Need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number four, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, authorizing the sale of the property located at block ninety-three, lot one dot zero three, and block ninety-five, lots one through sixteen, commonly known as five-ninety-nine Fayette Street to Claremont Property Acquisitions LLC, for the purchase price of thirteen-million-nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and additional action to effectuate same pursuant to the local redevelopment and house, housing law, NJSA forty-eight, column twelve, eight dash one. Need a motion?
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number five, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the contract for sale or surplus real property located at four-hundred Lorrie Street, Perth Amboy, New Jersey, to Perth Amboy Redevelopment Team for Neighborhood Enterprise and Revitalization Partner, for forty thousand dollars. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number six, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, authorizing an ordinance entitled Mercantile Establishment and Business Registration. I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Okay, look over the resolution, remember that there was one that was removed, which was one-ten.
Madam President? One-eighteen, can you put it aside?
One-eighteen?
So we can vote on that.
Uh-huh. What else?
What was that, one-eighteen?
Uh-huh.
And you said one-ten is removed.
One-ten is removed.
Right.
All right? You okay with everything else?
Yeah.
Okay, so the consent agenda, I need a motion for the consent agenda, which is R-niney-one-two-twenty-five through R.
One oh nine.
Uh, R-one-oh-nine? And then R-one-eleven through R-one-seventeen. I need a motion, that's the consent agenda.
Move it.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Okay, R-one-eighteen-two-twenty-five, reappointing Edna Dorothy Carty-Daniel to the Housing Authority for a five-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-nine. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes, and I just wanted to make a comment. Perth Amboy is blessed for all your services, not only in the Housing Authority, but for all the contributions that you do, and, um, I was blessed and fortunate at the time of graduating high school to be a ASK recipient when that program did start, so I appreciate the Housing Authority for all the services that's provided for, um, for the youth, for the community, and I know that you'll continue making wonderful achievements, so it's my honor to say yes, of course, and, um, once again, thank you for being a beautiful person, and thank you for all you've done for the Housing Authority.
Councilwoman Morales?
Ed, yes, before I, um, vote on this, I just also want to thank for all the wonderful work that you do and the contribution that you bring to the city. You're, you're just one amazing woman, from your husband, Miguel, and I. Thank you.
So your vote?
So my vote is yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Peralta?
My vote is yes, and again, I just want to say thank you for all that you do, you know, you're ha- you have your hands in a little bit of everything, and it speaks volumes, and it reflects on how much you love your community, um, and so my vote is yes, and congratulations.
Councilman Puccio?
I gotta think about it a minute. No. Ms. Style? No, no, no. I said Ms. Style. I think I've known you as long as I, I've been a police officer and worked for the city, and I know how much personal sacrifice and personal pain you have felt through the years, but you keep on going.
Yes.
And you are a testament of dedication to the city, because I don't think, we would, we would all pale in comparison to you and all your volunteerism. So Dot, thank you for what you do, and my vote is, uh, yes.
And Council President Tejeda?
Okay, uh, Ms. Daniel, um, for the time that I have known you, I only hear good things about you, and I just want to thank you for the forty-two years? Forty-two years, you said?
Forty-two years.
And, um, it's, it's amazing to have somebody so dedicated to a, to a position like that, and not only in town, but also abroad, uh, you know, going to, um, Washington DC, being part of it, and I congratulate you on that beautiful medal you got. Um, I just want to.
Can I say one thing? Just one thing?
Okay.
When I give the classes to commissioners, I, one of the questions that I start out the class with is where was the first public housing? And I'm saying this to give you something to remember. And people will look at me and they'll say Philadelphia, they'll say all different cities. And I said, no, that's stable in Deathman. That was the first public housing.
Yes. And, um, I just want to thank you for volunteering and, and doing that for our residents, and my vote is yes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
May I just add one more thing? You're my inspiration, I want to grow up to be just like you.
Grow young, grow young.
Public portion, five minutes maximum per speakers. Public portion, five minutes maximum per speakers. I need to open to the public to, in any matter that you want to speak on.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay.
Carolyn Maxwell, Perth Amboy, New Jersey, right next door, okay? And I think you should all do resolutions to honor Dot's achievements. That's it.
Thank you very much. Yes?
Name and everything again, right? Dorothy Carty-Daniel, Chamberlain Avenue, Perth Amboy, New Jersey. Is there a possibility that we can do something about the, the business district on Smith Street? There is no handicap parking there at all on Smith Street, and we need some handicap parking there. I know, I, I'm not sure about Smith Street, I know Fayette Street is a state road or a county road, whatever, and you can't do things there, but I think Smith Street belongs to the City of Perth Amboy.
No.
It doesn't?
I don't believe so.
It's a county? Yes.
Oh, I'd see, I never heard that, this is the first time I'm hearing that. I always hear about Fayette Street, you didn't, I didn't know that. So what can we do to ask the people in the county to do something about handicap spots? Because people, you know, if you, you want to shop in your own town, for God's sake, you know? I know everybody goes to the mall, but I like my stores in Perth Amboy, and I want to be able to park there and not get a ticket, you know? So I just thought I'd mention that, and if, if somebody can do something about putting on each one of the blocks at least one or two handicapped parking spots, I think the people in this town who are handicapped would be delighted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Mr. Green got that. All right, anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, I need a motion, oh, I'm sorry, council comments. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes. Good evening, everyone, I just wanted to make a quick comment on the ordinance first reading, ordinance number four, and I did want to just make a comment and say that we definitely do need a new animal shelter, so this is something that's important, and as well as getting to the contamination in the landfill, all that is important. And next, what, when the Set LeBron came up here, I think that was awesome to give a presentation and, and show us how it'll look for the Black Heritage Trailmaker, and it's great to hear that it was in collaboration with Mr. Dyke and the NJHC, so this is super exciting, if all projection does go as planned, I'm excited to see it in the summer or whenever it's completed, and have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Councilwoman Morales.
I'm gonna try and keep this short, but thank you for everyone that was here today, as usual. Just want to say, over the past weekend, I did attend the Black History Month celebration at the library, oh my God, what a show it was, Ron Snipes, can't have any funnier, right, Ms. Dorothy? I think, yeah, we had a great laugh, it was a great celebration, so I thank you for Joelle Rosa for putting that together, because I know that, you know, putting these events together does take a lot of work. So, thank you to our director, Joelle Rosa, for that.
And the board.
And the board, yes, absolutely, yes, of course, we can't forget the library board, and the staff, too, you know, it's a lot of work to put, put an event together. Also, they attended the Dominican flag raising, that was, you know, that was always a great thing to attend, very supportive of our Dominican community here in, in Perth Amboy. There is also Dominican flag raising coming up, right, in...
The county?
The county.
On the 28th?
On the 28th, in New Brunswick, 75 Bayard Street, at 5:00 PM. And just wanted to ask one question, Mr. Green, or I don't know, Vicki, minutes for our meetings, who...
The clerk.
For you? Are we gonna get them, like, on a monthly basis? I think we should be getting them?
As soon as I get them done, I try to get them to you. There is a backlog, and there's a backlog of ones submitted to IT that haven't been put up yet, but yeah.
Okay, yes.
And there's some that have been approved that haven't been sent to IT yet, it's just been crazy.
Okay, yeah, so we can just get that, because then we get... All right, thank you. And that's it. Thank you, have a good evening, and on the, the computer, I noticed that it was put for the next meeting, March 10. But it's 12, it says, they got an invitation.
Okay. I will explain that, yes, I will explain it, I had that in mind to explain that part.
So, and that's it, good night, everyone, thank you.
Councilwoman Peralta?
So just to piggyback off of what Councilwoman Morales was asking, before I make my comments, so how, what is the process, like, would we, would it be, today's a meeting, two weeks from now, we get, like...
No, they have a backlog.
Like, how does that happen?
I mean, that's how it should happen, but it's not, I'll be honest with you, I, I'm just, we've just recently got another employee, so hopefully I can get back on track with getting meeting minutes out.
Okay.
There's a backlog.
There is. Okay, just wondering, for clarification. And then before we adjourn, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who participated tonight, I feel like it's really important that, again, you come to these meetings, not just when you have a complaint or you're upset about something, but all the time, even if it's just once a month, because your voices are important and it is valuable, and so I just hope that you continue to, you know, speak up and give us your perspectives as we continue to strengthen our community, and thank you for today's presentation. I know that administration works very hard to put these things together, to make a visual, it's one thing to read it on paper, but then to see things on a screen really does help everyone understand the vision of whatever project we have going on and the vision for Perth Amboy, and it's something to get excited for because you get to see a little bit and learn a little bit about it before it actually happens. And I'm just excited for all of the positive changes that we have coming our way, and I just ask that everyone is patient, and again, that you just continue to express yourselves respectfully when you come to the day, so that we can continue to collaborate and work together. I hope that everyone has a good evening and have a lovely weekend. We're almost there, it's almost the weekend.
Councilman Puccio?
Actually, I'm going to keep it really short. I'm good.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who participated today, and it's, we are here to have dialogues and kind of getting opinion from the public, just to, you know, to give us some input of what the, the community needs. I, I also attended the Black History Celebration that the library had, and it was amazing, it was a beautiful, it was beautiful, and it was nice to see so many people there, a gentleman that was there that gave such a beautiful story about his life and, or everything that represent the, the Black community. Also, I just want to tell, and thank you to everyone who participated on, who came over for the Dominican flag raising. We should be celebrating together, any events that we can, can attend. I just want to remind everybody that the previously scheduled meeting for March 12 was moved to Monday, the 10th, March 10th. So there was a change, it was already advertised, so I just want to make it public that that will be changed. And I just want to say, thank you, go home safe, and thank you for participating. Have a good night, I need a motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Have a good night. You know, Mr. Opo is not even, he feels like he's on vacation still.